Good evening. I'm calling the open session of our Monday, March 10, 2025 Board of Education meeting. Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So Ms. Manley, that was a motion by Ms. McKenzie and a second by Mr. Rhodes. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. All righty, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for the following reasons: To discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. And the reason for that is public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive personal and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the NPIA. Also, discussion of ongoing negotiations with KCPS bargaining units. The reason for that is to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. Thirdly, to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice regarding the Rock Hall Police Department MOU, social media and the First Amendment, status of executive actions and legal challenges. The reason for that is the substance of discussion is protected by attorney-client privilege. And finally, administrative function, consideration of an ethics panel recommendation. The reason for that is the substance of discussion is considered an administrative function outside the scope of the Open Meetings Act but is discussed during an otherwise closed session pursuant to Article 3-104. So I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session for those reasons.
The motion?
Is that, was that Ms. Dorsey?
Ms. Dorsey, yes.
That's a motion by Ms. Dorsey. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That's a second by Ms. McKenzie. Is there any discussion? Otherwise, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, we, that's adjourned. We're going into closed sessions where we resume open session at about...
... Board of Education Meeting, I want to report on closed session. We went into closed session to discuss personnel, ongoing negotiations, to consult with legal counsel, and an administrative function. No actions were taken in closed session. The personnel issues will be voted on in open session. Ms. Swanson, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie has the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Queen has the second. Is there any discussion? A call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Manley, the vote is unanimous. Oh, Ms. Swanson.
Aye.
Alrighty. Public participation. Oh, no. Donation approval. Oh, that's all part of the consent agenda. Okay. Did anybody sign up for public participation, Ms. Manley?
That was quick.
Alrighty, we have one person. That's Amy Dolgus. I just want to remind the rules for public participation. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments, and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or processed through available channels. If submitting written testimony, speakers are requested to provide a copy to the president. Please remember that this is an opportunity for the community to address their comments to the board. It is not an opportunity for dialogue. If you have questions that need an answer, please contact the superintendent, or write a letter to the Board of Education, and a response will be sent back to you. Dr. McComas, will you keep three minutes for me?
I will. Okay.
Alrighty, Ms. Dolgus, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight to advocate for community members who are deeply involved in the media relations industry, some employed by media companies. Among them, my son Brinkley, who has dedicated his time and skills to support local student athletes, both as a professional and in his free time, as well as protecting and sports media days at various high schools. After examining the proposed media credential policy, it appears that these dedicated alumni are being unfairly singled out for their contributions, which include filming and photography for student athletes at their request of athletes and their parents. For instance, Brinkley has produced over 500 videos for high school athletes across our region, showcasing their talents on various media platforms. His expertise allows him to access any high school gym or sports field in Maryland and Delaware without needing a media pass, except for his alma mater, Kent County High School. Recently, he was prohibited from taking media footage at a Kent County basketball game, yet the following week, Kent County High School used his copyrighted photo, including his watermark of a student athlete on their social media, without permission. This raises questions about fairness. How can they deny one person the right to document athletic participation while using the very content they prohibit? If the driving concern behind the policy is liability, a simple solution would be to have these individuals sign a waiver, they're violating any potential concerns for the school system while still allowing them to support our athletes. However, we ask that you consider... However, we ask why they are considered a liability and cheerleaders are allowed on the gym sideline are not. There's a strong concern regarding the enforcement of this policy, whether it applies equally to both Kent County and visiting teams for all sports. Recently, videographers and photographers have received mixed messages from administrators. Some are allowed to take media footage, while others were told they cannot. This inconsistency is evident when opposing teams' personnel claim to be with their yearbook and are permitted to capture the same footage despite the restrictions put on the ones capturing footage of Kent County athletes. We ask how they can implement this proposed policy while most recently still permitting media coverage for other sports, and at the same time are not allowing media coverage for basketball. Other reasons suggested are the purpose of the policy to monitor students who are not allowed to be filmed or photographed with their signed permission form on file at the high school. However, since this is a public event, how can you enforce that policy? Many parents subscribe to the NHFS network to watch games if they cannot attend in person. Those who view the games through this platform often see the audience, many of whom may be unaware that they are being recorded or filmed. Additionally, numerous high school athletes utilize these resources to promote their skills to potential opportunities in highly competitive collegiate environments, while others review the footage to identify areas for improvement in their sport. I urge you to revisit this policy to better support our student athletes and nurture their talents, while also strengthening the essential community backing for our athletic program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dolgus.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Dr. McComas, your report?
Yes. So, good evening, everyone. I just want to highlight, we just are coming off of February, which of course, we celebrate Black History Month. And in many of our schools, we had celebrations, and I think our board members attended various programs. In February specifically, we honored Black history through focusing on achievements and contributions of Black Americans. And each of our schools held special events and exhibits throughout the month. At Galena Elementary, classroom doors were decorated to dive into Black experiences and Black history. H.H. Garnett hosted a local Black readers and speakers in classrooms, as well as the Brothers of Etta Etta Vamda Assembly. Rock Hall Elementary had another successful Black history books and breakfast experience, including local resources provided by Sumner Hall, an amazing display of Chesapeake heartland. Women in the waterman profession. In the afternoon, students learned all about stepping, a dance style that originated in African-American fraternities and sororities. And teacher leaders from every school participated in culturally responsive teaching, professional learning. I am so grateful for the many ways our schools and school systems celebrate local and famous African-Americans and their contributions. And looking forward, we know March is Women's History Month, and so I'll be excited to share with you all the celebrations that our schools are doing to elevate that aspect of our collective history. I also want to take a moment to highlight, we are focused on trying to build out resources for parents to support our academic achievement. And tonight's highlight is going to be focused on our math curriculum. Illustrative math is our curriculum that we use. And they have extensive parent resources in many languages. I think it's something like 21 or 24 different languages that they offer resources. And I'm going to ask Mr. Poor if he could pull up what parents can find on our website. We just really finished building this out last week so that everyone could see what's available to support their child. Illustrative math, while he's pulling that up, I'll just talk a little bit. What you'll see is every single grade level, every single unit, and every lesson within that curriculum, there's corresponding parent resources that help you help your child at home learn the math. And so, I don't know, what you see there is we have it highlighted by grades, so you can go to the greater subject level. And if you click through, you'll see there where it says English. Could you click on that, Mr. Poor, just to show the many languages that are available? So, there's Albanian, Arabic. If you scroll down, there is Spanish, which is our largest world language here. And it immediately converts everything into that language for parents. And you can scroll down, and here, you know, we have fifth grade finding the volume of an object. And you have video support that parents can watch to, again, help their students. So, there's resources available for every single unit, at every grade level, and every key standard lesson in the curriculum. So, we'll continue to bring forward highlights of our parent resources on the website, just to promote support. Okay? And so, thank you, Mr. Poor, for jumping over. While he's doing that, I just also want to do a shout out. Next week, March 19th, is our spring conferences. So, if you need to connect with your students' teachers, now's the time to do that. It's hard to believe that we're already in the third quarter, in the middle of the third quarter, and before we know it, spring break will be here. And then, last but not least, I just want to continue to provide you an update on our middle school project, Replacement Building. So, last week, I had the opportunity, as did our community rally, to communicate to the Maryland Senate Budget and Taxation Committee our desire to seek additional construction funds to build a new middle school building, or a replacement building, as they say in state construction terms. I just want to thank Mr. DeVilio. He helped lead that campaign. We had, in total, over 750 written responses that came through us. And we had additional community resources. The support our schools submit, another 50 letters. So, in total, we had over 800 written testimonies submitted to the Maryland Senate Budget and Taxation Committee advocating. In addition to us testifying last Tuesday in person in Annapolis, we were granted the opportunity to have a follow-on conversation with the vice chair of the committee, Senator Rosa Pepp. So, on last Friday, myself, Senator Hershey, who's our sponsoring senator for this legislation, and Dr. Lever and myself met to go in greater detail around our construction project and why we're requesting additional state funds to build our middle school. So, that is our most up-to-date status of our project. I'll continue to keep you informed, but as far as I'm concerned, we are still in the game. We are not out of... No one has said no yet and put it to rest. So, we are still advocating diligently to try to get additional funds to build our middle school on schedule. So, that's our most recent update, and I'll keep you in the loop. And that concludes the superintendent's report this month.
Thank you.
Mr. Hushin, Golden Anchor Award?
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school board members. Tonight, I stand before you to honor a special group of employees for our March Golden Anchor. To join me in this honor, I called to the podium High School Principal Chris Hempstead, and our director of teaching and learning, Gina Tchakamots.
Good evening, Dr. McComas, board members, staff, and community. Tonight, we are honored to recognize an extraordinary team of educators and staff whose dedication, creativity, and passion brought one of the best performances in Kent County High School history to our stage, Disney's The Lion King Jr. This production was more than just a play. It was a collaborative effort that united students from Kent County High School, Kent County Middle School, and our elementary schools, with over 1,000 guests in attendance. It was a testament to the incredible talent, teamwork, and commitment of everyone involved. At the heart of this success were these phenomenal individuals. But before I go into that, I just want to publicly thank the sponsor, Kent Cultural Alliance, publicly for their sponsorship to this play. Ms. Lori Armstrong, director. Ms. Lori Armstrong, Director, for her leadership, vision, and dedication to ensuring The Lion King Jr. was truly a magical experience that was engaging and kept everybody in the audience engaged. Jody Boats, Musical Director, for her passion and commitment to guiding our students to an incredible Disney musical performance. Stephanie Spencer, Producer, for her organizational leadership and dedication to making this production an overwhelming success. Anna Law, Noel Morris, and Stephanie Spencer, for the papier-mache masks and the set design, for their creativity and artistic vision in crafting the breathtaking visual elements that brought The Lion King Jr. to life. Caitlin Wright, KCNS Drama Teacher, for her instrumental role in engaging and preparing middle school students to be part of this outstanding production. And then, Mr. Bill Poor, we certainly want to thank you, Makerspace Program extraordinaire, for the amazing masks made with the 3D printer in the Makerspace Program. So, it was a collaboration of many, many students and individuals to put on this fantastic play. For the last several months, and it was months, the team worked tirelessly, staying late into the evening and giving up weekends to rehearse, refine, and create. Their efforts extended beyond directing and coaching. They guided students in designing breathtaking puppets, masks, and intricate set pieces, fostering both artistic and technical skills. Their hard work is a reflection of something even bigger, though. The arts at KCPS are alive, progressive, and growing. Research, and we know that the research consistently shows that students achieve at higher levels when they are involved in the arts, and I need to make sure that that is said publicly. The lessons learned through music, theater, and visual arts, discipline, collaboration, confidence, and creativity support success in all academic areas. Through The Lion King Jr., this incredible team and our students demonstrated that it truly, what it truly means to rise together at KCHS. Their work was not only entertained and inspired our community, but has also proven the power of the arts in education. Please join me in celebrating and thanking this amazing team for their passion, commitment, and the lasting impact that they've made on Kent County public schools.
(applause)
Come on down.
(inaudible)
All right, everybody look at me. Big smiles. One, two, three.
(applause)
I had so many people tell me it was the best play they've seen in a long time.
Production for our program. Don't be one next year.
(inaudible)
Alrighty, we're going to move on to board discussion. Ms. Swanson, can we start with you, please?
All right. Good evening, everyone. I don't have many updates tonight, but I wanted to let everyone know, and the board especially, that the Student Advisory Council is going pretty well. Our subcommittees are working hard, trying to plan their various events and working on their projects. We even got an offer for an opportunity to work with some Garnett Elementary School students for one of our goals. After our last board event meeting, someone reached out to me, which is very exciting. And while all that progress is great, I want to make sure that it's still a space for dialogue from the board to the students. So, if any of you ever have any specific questions for the students as a board, please let me know, and I can definitely bring it up at a meeting. We meet pretty often. I'm kind of mad at myself for not thinking to poll them about, like, the budget stuff, but I want to make sure to have that communication going on in the future. So, that's just something to think about if any of you guys have anything to bring up. I wanted to add on to the positivity surrounding the play. It was so, so good. I'm so sad that it was only one weekend, because I wish I could say, "Go see it," but sort of a once-in-a-time thing, so I'm excited for next year, whatever that may be. I might try out. I felt inspired, but yeah, it was really, really amazing. Something else I wanted to talk about that just came to mind was last Friday, at the high school, we had the College and Career Fair, which was really awesome. We had local businesses come. It was like in the gym, just tables of colleges, businesses, opportunities to connect, and I think it's something we've been doing for a little while now, and it's a really cool program thing that we do at the high school, and students get really excited about it. And this year, I think we had some eighth graders there. I don't know if that was a thing last year, but we got some connection through the middle school, and some students from other schools came. So, it's this really cool, big thing, and I just wanted to highlight that because I really think it's a cool thing that the high school does. That's pretty much it for me. Yeah.
First of all, I want to say the service for Vanessa Maddox was beautiful.
It was well done. Again, she's one of the kindest persons I've ever met. She came to all of our classes. I loved being around her. She was a sweet lady. Getting to The Lion King was by far the best show I've ever seen. It's too bad, I'd love to see it one more time in a couple of weeks, but I guess that can't happen, because so many people say, "I wish I'd seen it." People at Heron Point, a lot of people, but you just said it would be almost impossible to do, but it would be nice if you could try.[951.25][951.25](laughter) She's green with it. A huge shout out to the director, Lori Armstrong, artistic director, Stephanie Spencer, and music director, Jody Boats, and Anna Lil, and a couple others that I have forgotten here. I apologize for that. I was fortunate enough to see two of the Varsity Girls games right before the playoffs, and they really worked hard. And all of the coaches, Michelle Phillips, Ty Ray Johnson, and Antoine, were all professional. They lost the championship by one bucket, but played hard. I ran into one of the players at the Jobs Fair, and I said, "How do you feel about that?" She goes, "You know something?" She was a freshman. She says, "I'll be here next year, and we're going to work harder." I thought that was really cool. I attended the College and Career Fair last week. The attendance looked really good. I was happy to see. I did try to sign up for the Space Force, but they said I was too old, so I couldn't do that. Okay, so, Dr. McComas, I have a question for you. I've heard, and I've read several places, that this ICE group is starting to go to all the schools. Do we have any protocol if they enter one of our schools? What do you have?
Yeah, so, thank you for the opportunity. When that was communicated about eight weeks ago, the State Superintendent met with all superintendents across the state, and we had the opportunity to speak directly with the Maryland ICE Director, Mr. Ellington, if I recall his name correctly. And our protocol is if we were to have somebody come to the school, which we have not, if we were, the administration knows to reach out to me directly, and I have the number to call the Director of ICE.
In case somebody doesn't know, maybe tell us what ICE is.
Oh, what does ICE stand? Thank you, Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement. Thank you. I'm like, blank. Thank you.
I didn't even put you on the spot there.
Got that quiz wrong, but they call, the principals know to call me directly, and I can call the Director as well. And we have also been communicating on our website links to the Maryland State Department of Education. There's resources for families there as well. So, that's our process and protocol.
Okay, the last question I have is, they're saying that the Education Department's going to close. I don't know if it's going to happen or not, but I would feel that's really going to affect us. With all the different, Title I and all those things, because we get all those grants, and I just want us to be really careful with our money. That's all I'm saying, and I know you are, but we need to be prepared for this economy if it tanks, and if we don't have the money. We need to have the money to pay, you know, everyone. So, I need your opinion on that, what you think about that.
Well, I think we take it one day at a time. I know we are all closely monitoring what is happening, both at our state level as well as the federal level. Again, I would offer that I, along with all the other superintendents, stay in close communication with our State Superintendent, who also is monitoring what's happening at the federal level as well as the state. And so, we certainly would be impacted if funding from the federal government ceased for school systems. I think we need to be thoughtful and not rush to conclusions, but be cautious and prepared with contingency plans. So, as we know, we have a budget that has constraints at the state level as well, and so you're absolutely right. We need to be wise in how we use every penny and be prepared to make changes as conditions change.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Queen?
I don't really have much this time around, because I was battling the flu over the last eight days, but I will say this, to have 1,000 people go see the play, great job, outstanding. And also, it got me in a little bit of trouble with my youngest daughter. She said, "My householder are the only four people that didn't see the play." So, bring it back, so that way I can get out the dollhouse with her.
Bring it back.
I also had a chance to go on a field trip and chaperone with Kent County Middle School last week, the seventh grade class. We went to the National Mall in Washington, DC. I'm just going to say, seventh graders are the funniest kids on the planet. They got a lot of jokes, and they have a lot of snippy sayings whenever you say something back to them. So, I did enjoy that. And then, lastly, congratulations to my oldest daughter, Aria. She just texted me that she actually made the tennis team at Kent County High School. So, that's all I have today, a short report from me.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey? Nothing? Okay. Alrighty. Ms. McKenzie?
Sure. In honor of Women's History Month, I'd just like to share a quote from Abigail Adams that really spoke to me. "These are the times in which a genius would wish to live. It is not in the still calm of life or in the repose of a Pacific station that great characters are formed. The habits of a vigorous mind are formed in contending with difficulties. Great necessities call out great virtues. And certainly, we are facing difficulties in this legislative and budget season, but we are rising to the challenge, and prayerfully, we will continue to do so with creativity, resourcefulness, and resolve to find solutions so that all students are achieving their highest potential." It was a privilege to support our schools along with Dr. McComas, Jan DeVilio, and Commissioner Nickerson on February 11th, as we testified on behalf of the House bill to advocate for the funds needed for the new middle school. I was grateful, also, along with many others, for the opportunity to provide a written testimony for the Senate bill, and I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. McComas and others for your ongoing advocacy with this effort. Other highlights this past month include, I got to attend the Kent County High School FFA banquet on February 21st. I just want to say that I walked away feeling so impressed with the history that was preserved through the ceremony of the business meeting that occurred that night and the leadership skills being practiced. These are skills that have the potential of serving those students throughout their lives. Equally impressive was the community support that was so evident and something unique and special to Kent County. And thank you, Mrs. Jennifer Calldepp, for the invitation and all your hard work in supporting FFA at KCHS. On the 28th, I had the pleasure of attending the Black History Month luncheon at Rock Hall Elementary School. This was my first time being in Rock Hall Elementary, and so to get to be there on such a special occasion was an honor and a real treat. Again, it was so heartwarming to experience community in that space and to see how excited everyone was to be reading to students in their classrooms and how engaged students were with the stories and the readers. I especially appreciated the discussions around ways to incorporate Black history into a daily part of our students' lives and learning more about the work being done by Chesapeake Heartland and others to see that become a reality. And a thank you, special thank you to Becca Bigelow for all your hard work in hosting such a lovely event. And last but not least, I had the opportunity to attend the opening night of production of the Disney's The Lion King Jr. And I just wanted to say, watching it, the audience could feel that everyone on stage was enjoying telling this story and creating this wonderful little world for us to be a part of that night. The set, the costumes, the music, and the movement worked together wonderfully. Combining the high school and the middle school brought an amazing energy to the performance. I know so many individuals made this event as successful as it was, but I just wanted to say a special thanks to our Golden Anchor awardees this evening. For those that aren't aware, my bachelor's degree is in theater, so I know firsthand that a tremendous amount of work goes into performances like this, but it was clearly a lot of fun to be a part of this production, and we couldn't help but have fun with them, and so bravo. And that's all I have for this evening.
So, I'm going to jump in on that real quick. I was at opening night. Dr. McComas was there. Mr. Rhodes was there. We did not break the open meetings. Actually, we're spread out all over the gym. So, I'm just starstruck, and I'm an old-timer, you know, went to, it's hard for me to believe, there's a classmate of mine sitting in the audience that next year will be celebrating our 50th reunion, which is hard to believe. So, I'm going to pay you guys the ultimate compliment, and to the old-timers, you will really appreciate this. Stephanie, because you came up through Mrs. Maloney, that reminded me of the kind of production that Sylvie Maloney and Bob Tyson would do. I mean, it was spectacular. I mean, it moved so quickly. The costumes just blew me away, and for people that didn't go, a seventh, I think he's a seventh grader, Little Richie, you know, sixth grader, he carried the play for that first act. I mean, it's amazing that he learned all of that dialogue, and it's unfortunate that Eamon Lindsay is not here tonight, because he attends all of our, usually all of our school board meetings, but as Scar, he was, I mean, he blew me away, and he's just a 10th grader. So, it was amazing. A lot of things went on in the past month since we've met. Ms. Dorsey and I attended the Minority Scholars Program on February 19th at Kent County High School. I think this was the fourth induction class, and 14 new students went in. That was pretty amazing. Just a couple of things, I want to ask Dr. McComas, you know, now that we've had one positive case of measles in Maryland, I was on a Zoom meeting today with a Mayb Legislative Committee, and I was just curious, are we staying in touch with our Health Department? And sadly, two Prince George's County students over the winter passed away with the flu, so I'm just sort of wondering, are you, what's our connection with the Health Department with all this going on?
Right, so, for everyone's sake, our school nurses work for the Health Department. They actually are employees of the Health Department, but we contract with the Health Department for them to be with us in our schools every day, and so we are daily in close communication with our local Health Department. I will say, we did have a run of the flu in our schools in the month of January and February, and it did impact our student attendance as well as our faculty. You know, our teachers are in close contact with their children. So, we did have a go-around with the flu. So far, so good on the measles, but we are in daily contact, and we did send home reminders to families that, you know, if your child is showing fever, and, you know, just reminding parents to be thoughtful around if your child's not well, you know, don't send them to school if they have a fever. Those are standard reminders, just because it takes a community to keep the community well, so.
Alrighty, and this is just, this last thing is for Alden. So, Strong Schools Maryland has been a major supporter of the Blueprint, and they're going to have a student rally on next Monday in Annapolis. So, sadly, it's an evening thing, it's 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., but I just wanted to let you know if that was something that you might want to get some of your advisory?
I think I've heard about this, yeah.
You know, so, you know, it's an opportunity to participate on the ground floor in terms of legislation and things like that, and showing your support. So, I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Next Monday?
Yep, next Monday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And probably, if you got on the Strong Schools Maryland website, you might be able to find out a little bit more information, and I think they were even offering some sort of assistance with transportation.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Alrighty, so, education service, Mr. Hushin in the calendar, and Mr. DeVilio.
Thank you, President McGee. Dr. McComas, school board members, tonight, we bring the Florida updated results from our final school calendar vote. You do have a couple printouts on... So far, so good on the measles, but we are in daily contact. And we did send home reminders to families that, you know, if your child is showing fever and, you know, just reminding parents to be thoughtful around if your child's not well, you know, don't send them to school if they have a fever. Those are standard reminders, just because it takes a community to keep the community well.
All righty. And this is just, this last thing is for Alden. So Strong Schools Maryland has been a major supporter of the blueprint. And they're going to have a student rally on next Monday in Annapolis. So it's sadly, it's an evening thing. It's 6:00 to 8:00 PM. But I just wanted to let you know if that was something that you might want to get some of your advisory.
I think I've heard about this, yeah.
You know, so it, you know, it's an opportunity to participate on the ground floor in terms of legislation and things like that and showing your support. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Next Monday?
Yep, next Monday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And probably if you got on the Strong Schools Maryland website, you might be able to find out a little bit more information. And I think they were even offering some sort of assistance with transportation.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
All righty. So Education Service, Mr. Hushin and the Calendar and Mr. Devilio.
Thank you, President McGee. Dr. McComas, school board members. Tonight, we bring the February updated results from our final school calendar vote. You do have a couple printouts on your desk. So if you recall, when we resent out the pre-survey, we ended up with 579 votes. Based off of that, the school calendar committee decided to put four school calendar templates for this upcoming school year, two with a post-labor day start and two with a pre-labor day start. When that final vote was pushed out, we had a total of 609 responses with 140 students responding, 215 parents, 130 teachers, 78 support staff members, and 21 administrators with an additional 23 community stakeholders. So I have to say, you know, in the last five years of doing this, the stakeholder feedback was very well dispersed here. We had a lot of student voice. Alden, I believe you had a big, big impact there, but it was really, really nice to see the student voice that we had here, especially when factoring in a possible high school graduation date. So we broke the data down for you just to show you what everyone was in favor of. But if you turn to the back two pages on this printout, the calendar committee is proposing to bring forward Option 1 and 2 to you tonight for a motion and final approval. Option 1 was the overall reading favorite with 35.6% of the vote for their first choice, with Option 3 as the second place finisher in that category. But another data point consideration, when asking everyone what their second overall choice was, you'll see that Option 2 was the favorite there with 30.4% of the vote, just above the 29.8 of Option 1. Both calendars are a pre-labor day start. The difference, the main difference in both formats is that one has longer breaks and one does not. The one with the longer breaks, Option 1, has two weeks off for winter break and one week off for spring break, with students getting out on Friday, June 12th. Option 2, okay, same thing, pre-labor day start. Shorter winter break, shorter spring break, but students' last day would be Friday, the 5th. Dan, are there any other additional comments or?
You can see in looking at, again, the first choice, where we said Option 1 was the highest vote getter and Option 3 was the second highest. Option 2 is just a couple of percentage points, which is really a small number of people off from that Option 3. So we didn't see a wide swing there. And, you know, overall, through the cross-section, Option 1 really did come out with the most overall support from families, students, and staff. We did hit this multiple times, sending directly to families, using our app, using the website, using social media. And we think people are really starting to tune in more to our app than some of our other avenues. So that, we really saw a boost in engagement this year.
Question. I'm looking at this. Which one is post-labor day? You said there's three. Which one?
Both templates that you have in front of you. There are, there's not a post-labor day template that the calendar committee is bringing forward.
So these are all pre-labor day, they come back? Well, I have a problem with that. I mean, I think most people, they're on vacations. They want to go through labor day and they want to come back to school. But that's just my opinion. So I, what option would it have? Any of these?
So they would be, they would be Option 3 and 4. But we did not bring those templates forward because the calendar committee proposed bringing forth Option 1 and 2.
Based on the survey data?
Yes.
So that was, just to be clear, we're bringing forward the options that had the highest amount of data and support. So it's not because we just said we like these. It was based on the data of the survey.
Before the data was showing that they wanted to do after Labor Day.
Yeah.
So what happened when you went back into something?
So when they put the four templates out, it was a re-vote. So they saw what the actual calendars, the proposed calendars would look like. So they got the whole snapshot. But what we did with the first survey is about establishing priorities. Right? So we give basically a menu item of where breaks could be, where start times could be, where end times could be. So they give us priorities on that. And then we take those priorities and we craft these templates that then show the logistics of all of those moving parts. Number of student hours required, number of student days required, number of staff days required. And from there, that's when parents see the practicality of this calendar. And that's where they make a more informed vote on the calendar itself, as opposed to that first survey, which is their priorities for the calendar.
Yeah, I've just, I mean, I see the two where you have first choice, second choice. But then when I'm looking at Option 3 under first choice, that has more in favor than, I guess, I guess I'm just trying to understand why. Because it's all the same calendar that they're getting to choose, first choice, second choice. But I guess I'm just not sure why Option 3 wasn't put as like a second alternative.
Because we factored in that second question is what is everybody's second choice? And that's where Option 2 was a clear favorite over Option 3.
I've got a question. So I, my memory is that when you guys came back last month after we had asked you to go back and get a larger, a larger pool of responses, I thought you had said that the larger pool really reinforced what the smaller pool said. That, you know, but, but the original thing was the post-labor day start. So it kind of really didn't, did it?
So when you look at the priorities that Dan was just speaking about?
No, I listened to it. And I don't have a dog in the fight because I don't have kids, but.
The priorities of, we want everything.
Yeah. And we know that, yeah.
Option 1 gives everyone everything. And that was the last template that we created, that we shared with you all last month. So I hear what you're saying, but once that, you know.
No, I understood Mr. Devilio saying, hey, so this is what you've said you want? And this is exactly, this would be the implementation of it. I get that. It's been a while since we will have gone pre-labor day.
So the last time we did a pre-labor day start was the start of the 21-22 school year.
Okay. And that's coming, and that was coming out of COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, a question and a comment. First question is, in between the Option 1 and Option 2, what are the graduation dates?
So the graduation date on both templates is the same. And it is a proposed graduation date because that date does have to bring forward to you all for approval. But right now, you'll see in green, in May 26th, it is a placeholder for May 29th.
Agreed, yes. And then also, make sure that I follow the process. I remember y'all first came, I don't want to misquote, say it was like 188.
It was in the 100, it was 100 something.
Then you all went back and got 400, and now you're coming back with 600. From me, watching the calendar, I think this is the most input I've seen, at least in the last four years. Would that be correct?
Without a doubt.
Yeah. So I think it was an excellent job. And I think when we first brought our concerns, you all done your due diligence. And the thing with the due diligence in this is we're hearing directly from the community on this. I saw the apps. I saw it on social media, which I will say this, the KCPS social media is getting a little better, starting to rotate more. If I see it in my algorithm, that means it actually has a little bit of rhythm and pick up with it. My kids also, I made them vote, but they voted on this as well, and they were for Option 1. So I think overall, with the longer breaks, the only big difference I see is the day we get out for school. But the two weeks for Christmas break and then the week for spring break, I think that's what I heard throughout the community as their two biggest complaints. Not having a big spring break and not having a long winter break. I think it was accomplished in, with the options that were given and the feedback from. And this is the largest student input I've seen, period, looking at the calendar. So my opinion is great job on just bringing us the data to be able to look at and then ultimately vote on. Thank you.
Alden, what are your thoughts?
I have a few thoughts. I think that it's really interesting that we got back to pre-labor day starts. I think that that just shows that when you reach out and ask, you can get different results from what you'd expect. Because I always hear like, oh, we want, you know, school to start later because we want more summer, whatever. But seeing the big student input and seeing that they want that is kind of revealing. So I think that just says something to, you know, actually asking people. I think it's important to note that it is harder to find childcare the later into like August and September it gets because, you know, college students that are camp counselors go to college. And then that leaves parents like having to figure out what to do with their kids before they go back to school. So I think that's something important to note. And I think that will hopefully, that this pre-labor day start will help. I think that the longer, I'm personally for Option 1, longer breaks. I think the longer spring break is something I have, don't remember having. It's always like, oh, spring break is so lame. Spring break is so lame. Like that is something I always hear. So.
Basically a long weekend.
Two days.
Yeah, exactly. And I think that'll give more vacation time for people who, you know, can't have that extra time in the summer. That can be another way for them to get that. And I think it'll be interesting to see how people react to this format because we haven't had it for so long. And I think, yeah, I just think this is some really positive results. And I'm excited to see how it goes. Also, I had a question. I thought we already voted on the graduation date.
As we're talking about next year?
Oh, next, oh.
For your year.
There we go. Okay. That was it. I panicked for a second. But, um, yeah, I think this is great. And I think it's really cool that the students really got involved. I'm really proud of them.
This afternoon, you all are looking for a motion to vote for today?
Yeah. So just a couple of general things. I want to thank you guys for going, going back and redoing this. And I feel that a larger response legitimizes the decision we'll make. It's pretty clear. It's not like it was 25 to 24. It's pretty clear what everybody prefers, which I think also, this might not be the right word, but makes it more defendable. If somebody comes up and says, well, why did you choose that? Well, guess what? You told us that's what you wanted. And to pick up on something Alden said, with having longer spring and Christmas breaks, maybe that will afford families opportunities to take their vacations so that kids do not get pulled out of school during a school, a real school week. So, because I see that happening because sometimes, and I hope I don't offend parents, but it's not convenient for a parent to do those three days in Easter to take a vacation. But now if they're getting a whole week, maybe that will just work out better for more kids staying in school when they're supposed to. So.
Mrs. McGee made a really good point that the students voted on this. Because I remember three or four, I don't know how many years ago, people would say, why are you starting before Labor Day? I heard that. That, you know, it ruins our whole vacation. I remember hearing that a couple of times. But we can give the response that the students voted on this. So it's not like, you know, we didn't allow to make the decision without doing the homework. So I like what you said there.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
And I would just offer, I mean, I'm here no matter what, so it doesn't much matter to me in that regard. But I will just say this, in terms of planning for vacation, it's that what matters is people know ahead of time, right? So if they know, you know, four days before Labor Day, my students were going to break the ice and get them back in the routine of going to school, then they know not to plan for that week, right? So the main thing is getting the information out to community members early enough so that they can make their plans and they don't have to change plans. So.
Anybody else have some comments before I ask for a motion? All righty, I'm seeking a motion for one of these two calendar options.
I'll make a motion for one.
All righty. Ms. Dorsey's made a motion for Option 1. Is there a second for that?
I second Option 1.
All righty. Mr. Queen's made the second. Is there any discussion on that? All right, I'm going to call for a vote on that motion, which is for Option 1. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Ms. Watson?
Aye.
All righty. It's, you know, Ms. Manley. Thank you. And I just want to say again, thank you very much because I know it added to your workload and you had to get innovative and get the word out in as many different ways as possible. So I appreciate you for thinking outside the box.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I appreciate that. And I just want to take that opportunity to actually give a special shout out to these two because they really do a lot of the behind the scenes. Dan's working on sending out, and Gail, what she does with this. Like, I mean, this takes time. This is, this is very tedious, takes a lot of time. It's the first year we put out four templates, but really appreciate both of them. And then our school calendar committee, which, you know, consisted of parents, teachers, support staff, admin, everyone was all.
Was there a student on that committee?
There was not. So that is, that is a good thing to include going forward.
One last question. From this experience, actually sending out four templates, what are you all going to enter the first round next year with? Like takeaways, add-ons, aha moments? Is it anything you have?
Well, I think given that this process, you know, we went like a month longer, I think, you know, personally for me, and I'll take this back to the team, I would like to start the process a little bit earlier. You know, especially if we need extra time to get that extra stakeholder input. We'll have the time and we can still, you know, come to a final decision when we typically do in like February. But I think we've also learned too that, you know, we just need to stay aggressive with sharing info out. I think the point about getting a student voice on our actual committee is definitely something that I think we will absolutely do. So.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dorsey?
Yes. I want to say that I know that Mr. Queen had suggested that you have the information and give out at the games at the Kent County. I also wanted to suggest that it would be a good job, I mean, a good idea to have them at the middle school as well when they have the school games. Because they have the parents that come and they would be able to, you know, grab one.
I did see, I saw a flyer on the bulletin board at Garnet. So I know that schools were pushing it too.
Yes.
May I just, one last time, how many people participated in the survey?
So the final survey, it was 609.
So over 600 people. So again, just walk away number for anyone who questions the effort.
Gotcha. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
All righty, the KCMS transformation.
So as our principal and assistant principal are coming up, we want to bring forward a presentation to share with the community the progress that is being made inside our middle school. I've spent a lot of board meetings talking about our efforts to find funding to build a new middle school facility. But at the same time, a great deal of transformation is happening inside our middle school. And I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of that and that we took a moment to celebrate, encourage, and let you know that this will just be the first of more presentations that will come forward over the, over time as we highlight and lift up our middle school. Last board meeting, I talked about really investing in our middle school as one of our theories of action to drive our achievement because we need students to start high school ready. school ready for the demands of high school, and that cannot happen without a strong robust middle school. So with no further ado, I'll turn it over to our principal, Mr. Buckle, and, um, take it away.
Alright. So, good evening, Dr. McHermes, President McGee, and board members. I'm Matt Buckle, I'm the principal of Kent County Middle School. Joining me tonight is Ms. Kelly Morgan, the assistant principal of Kent County Middle School. So tonight, we're excited to share some of the progress and transformation that's taken place over the past 18 months. Let's see if I can control this as well. Um, our focus is going to be on these key areas, um, which have driven the positive change, which is improving school culture, targeted intervention in academics, data-driven successes, and rebuilding the KCMS community. So we look forward to highlighting the strides we made and the impact that it's had on our students and staff.
Hello. There's so much you want to share, so I'm going to try to not talk too much. So first off, we wanted to talk about shifting the discipline approach at KCMS. I hate talking into a microphone. So with the implementation of Polly Baff training and restorative practices, we have established a strong foundation in the following key components. So first, we are really trying to have a kind of mentality shift of working with proactive versus reactive. So we want to be in the 80% proactive and 20% reactive. So this is really a mind shift for our teachers. Um, through that, we really encourage our teachers to get to know your students, establish relationships, get to know triggers and how to de-escalate situations, and then recognize and address problems before they come a true problem. So really thinking about that, if you see a child, we encourage our teachers, if you see a child that's upset, or you see a situation that might become a bigger issue, take five minutes to regroup your class rather than losing the 55 minutes of your entire class. So I would rather lose five minutes to regroup, assess the situation, kind of figure everything out, and then teach for the next 50 minutes. So that's really been a mind shift for our teachers, and we've really seen a lot of positive results from that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I don't speak the lingo. I know what restorative practices are, but I don't know what Polly Baff training is.
And I actually made you some notes, um, so it goes into more detail about Polly Baff. Polly Baff is a pretty famous behavioral interventionist. We worked with her two summers ago, um, with a team of teachers and admin before Mr. Buckle and I came in, and, um, she is amazing. Um, with Polly Baff, we created our KCMS values, which we talked about actually last year at a board meeting, I'm not sure if you remember, but on this slideshow, you can kind of see them. So we created an acronym using KCMS, so our values are, I seek knowledge, I build community, practice mindfulness, and I strive for success. So with our KCMS values, we really ground all of our behavior interventions in our values. So for instance, you know, if a student is doing something wrong, rather than just being like, you're an ISS, we talk to the students about what value did you violate? How can we rebuild and, you know, talk about the value you violated rather than just sticking you in ISS or suspending you? Obviously, in some cases, suspensions are warranted, but it's not just a suspension, and we don't talk about the damage that you have done. Um, and we will talk about restorative practices on our next slide, because restorative practices really play a huge role. But without establishing our Kent County Middle School values, there was really nothing to ground our approach in. So this has been really helpful for us, and we created those values with Polly Baff. Um, next, we created a KCMS protocol, behavior protocol. I don't have that shared because it's quite detailed. This was really helpful for our teachers, um, to ensure they are addressing unwanted behavior thoroughly and appropriately. Portions of this protocol involve assessing response to behavior interventions, documenting behavior, and debriefing as a team to discuss intervention effectiveness. So for instance, we don't just send a student out. Most of the time, nine times, nine times out of 10, they want to be sent out of class, right? Now our students know, you know, that's not an option. We're going to work through this, unless it's, you know, hindering the learning of others, we're going to work through this, and, you know, your purpose is to be in the classroom learning. So this has really been a huge shift for our teachers, because, you know, a lot of times it's like, let's remove the problem, but we work through it, and then our students are in class and they're learning. So it's been a really great shift. And then obviously, most important for me, if you know me, relationship building, so really focusing, helping our teachers realize that building relationships with students is really the key in order to keep them behaving and working, because if they know you genuinely care about them, nine times out of 10, they're going to be successful. So that has really tried to be a shift overall in our school.
I wondered, could you speak to, in any of the training, did they provide any guidance on, uh, data to know if this is actually being effective? Like, are you looking at suspension rates being lower, behavioral forums?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that.
Okay, alright.
Before y'all go to the slide, a question about Polly Baff.
Because it reads, uh, she consults to train, she consults to and train administration, teachers, and paraprofessionals on how to manage and change difficult school behaviors. So, are we in agreeance? Well, not, I don't want to say in agreeance, but are we saying Kent County Middle School was a difficult behavior situation? And this is why you all chose this?
I don't think so. I mean, I really think any middle school has behavior challenges. Um, it's just a tough age group, really. Um, I think Polly Baff, Polly Baff worked with a lot of our elementary schools as well. Um, so it's nice because we're all kind of on the same page. This has been someone that we've been working with across schools. Um, so it's really, it's a mind shift. It's not necessarily, this is how you should deal with students. It's, it's a true mind shift. And when we worked with our team of teachers two summers ago, I mean, we left and it was, I mean, people that had been there for years that were very defeated, it was like breathing new life in them, and we've really have seen a difference in a year and a half.
When we came in, we really needed something to be a foundation to build off of. And the work that Polly has done with Kent County Public Schools, like we, like Kelly said, hasn't just been Kent County Middle School, it's been a lot of schools. Dr. Keane has been pretty instrumental in bringing her in years ago, and, uh, you know, so it, it was a great foundation point for us to kind of springboard off of.
I don't think I worded my question right, but you, you two answered it. The answer I was looking to hear you all said, I don't think I worded my question right, but proceed.
Are you good then?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright. Oh, this kind of came up a little funky, but, um, alright, so restorative practices, so conflict resolution is really the heart of the success of restorative practices and that initiative that we're looking for. So through our work with the Ackerman Institute, we've, uh, we have a group of restorative practice champions who've been actively engaged in a book study throughout this year. They're also leading restorative circles with both staff and students, and this is fostering a culture where conflict is addressed through dialogue rather than aggression. Most of our teachers are now gaining some confidence to facilitate some of these circles on their own. Um, what's, what we're seeing here is that students, we're empowering students with these skills to navigate these difficult situations in constructive ways instead of resorting to, you know, sort of, well, we may as well go as a point, right? The impact has been pretty profound. Um, teacher referrals this time last year were about 155 referrals. To date, we have about 25.
Could you say that again? Say that one more time.
So last year, at this time, we had 155 teacher referrals. Now, teacher referrals don't include all the other things that come to us that don't get written out, but just from teachers. So again, teachers writing referrals, to me, is when they're giving away a lot of their power. So the fact that we went from 155 referrals this time last year to 25 this year is huge. The teachers have regained that power in their classrooms, they're taking over, they're dealing with all the little things, they're working with their students, they're figuring out conflict resolution, they're building students back. So even if they do send a student out for whatever it might be, let's say Mr. Queen opens his phone away, the teacher sends that, sends it up to me, we have a conversation, we walk back, he then puts the phone away, goes back to class, and then we move on. That happens all the time. Didn't happen before. Um, physical altercations have significantly decreased, and the level of those altercations last year were more severe, I would say, where this year, you know, it's, it's a rough handling, normal middle school stuff, but nothing major. Um, and again, prioritizing communication, empathy, proud of serving over confrontation. We really transform the way that students are resolving their conflicts. I had an incident today with a couple of students had an issue in the cafeteria. At the end of the day, they came back together, they want to apologize, he said he was really sorry, I was tired today, I overreacted, I did something I shouldn't have, whatever, whatever case might be, you know? But, you wouldn't have seen that a year ago. So it's pretty profound what we're able to do with these students through this restorative practice. Um, we have created a safer, more supportive learning environment because of the work we've done with Ackerman and restorative practices. Questions? Nope.
Well, one about the mediation part, those are trained mediators?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You said it was mediators being used with the restorative part, or the teachers are?
The teachers are. So we, we work with, um, we, we have a consultant that came in in the summer, came in in the fall, he's been visiting a couple of times since then, but our champions really are the identified group that have like done the work, done the study, and are training all of the other staff. So we do, we do regular meetings, we do regular, um, things with our, within our school PLCs to disseminate that.
We've also started our faculty meetings with circles, which has been really great to get our teachers kind of like in the flow of doing circles. Um, we have some teachers that are doing circles weekly, we have some teachers that are doing circles daily. Um, our lead teacher in our Pathways Academy is kind of our main, uh, restorative practice champion. If a teacher feels uncomfortable leading a circle, she will go in and help them lead the circle. So it's really been amazing having these champions in-house because they're kind of the pros with it, they're doing the book study. So we have the support in-house, you know, not even necessarily from the company, like we're building that capacity in the building, so that has been really helpful.
Okay.
Can I just say that I, I love everything I'm hearing? I think the value part of it is so important, especially at that age, to instead of, I like what you said about instead of removing a student or letting a student remove themselves, like saying, nope, we're going to resolve this, and like teaching them at that, like specific age to like turn their energy into something positive is so, so awesome, and I just, I love it.
Yeah, and it's great. It's great too, because a lot of times students just, you know, in other situations, they're just pushed away, and for the students to see like, I don't want you to leave me, like speaks volumes to them.
Yeah. Every, every behavior has a, has a purpose.
Yeah.
And most of the time, that purpose is they're either seeking attention or seeking escape because they don't feel that they can do the work, and that's why they went out of the classroom. We're putting them back in, empowering them that they can do the work, and that we're here to support them. And it's become a much more nurturing, caring environment. It's, it's pretty impressive what's taken place in a short period of time.
We could talk about this the whole time.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just wondering, you know, just because it does take time to shift a culture in a different direction, and so I just wasn't sure with any residual resistance, like how you guys, you know, were addressing that, or, you know, how, how you, how you kind of bring people on board.
I mean, surprisingly, we've had very little resistance. I would say we probably have maybe one person that I could think of, and they're only a little resistant because I think they just don't want to do the work. But they're not.
Well, and I think it's, yeah, and maybe a little bit more uncomfortability as well, but that's why we offer like the support, like, hey, if you don't, you know, if you don't want to do the circle yourself, that's fine. Like I said, we have teachers who, I mean, they could probably be filmed and work for the company at this point. That's how good they are at circles. And then we have some teachers that just, hey, we're going to do, a circle could be as little as a check-in for five minutes, or a circle could be a 45-minute conversation where people end up potentially get crying, you know? So it, it, it's the comfortability in the teachers.
Well, to that point though, you know, just because it does open up some doors, um, how are you working with your social worker, you know, in the school? If things do get too much.
So they're all, they're all part of our champion group?
Yeah.
So they're all right on the foreground, and, and they're right, they're all there.
Awesome.
Yep.
If I may add, I'll just say, um, and I'm, you know, our team is doing the work, but I, I have had experiences, um, transforming a school through restorative practices, and just, I want to reinforce what our school leader said here around, um, that shift towards proactive, right? So, so much of restorative practices, um, is you move from this moment of it being about conflict revol, uh, resolution, to really it being a proactive community building, so that when something goes wrong, when a child makes a mistake, or students have a conflict, they're able, they have the resiliency, and the culture is supportive of that resiliency to get right back in the game. We talked to, you know, they talked about that, and, and that takes every person. Um, and I think, I just want to commend you for the champions really supporting their colleagues in building their capacity, right? Because what we can't do is opt out of it, right? We can't say, well, I don't do it, you do my circle for me. No, you, you come help me, so I'm building my capacity as well. So, just want to compliment you and reinforce, uh, that, um, that it's really about building resiliency.
Yes, for sure.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say that it sounds like that you're dealing with the students as well as, you know, like their individual problem, taking them aside and dealing with them one-on-one, which is a good thing, because a lot of times, um, children have been root and different things like that, and they just need to know that you see them, and that their problem matters, or they matter, in other words, you know? And sometimes, like you said, um, every behavior is, is, well, as far as I'm concerned, when children have, or you see behaviors, many times, they stem from something else. And it's a quick fix if we take the time to talk to them.
Absolutely.
And individually, and treat each problem as an individual problem instead of, you know.
For sure. Yep. Thank you.
Alright. So moving along, um, so our win time is what, is what we refer to as our what I need time. Um, this time is a dedicated period designed to provide targeted intervention and support. Uh, so what we did was initially, we placed all the students based on their MCAT proficiency from the previous year. It's allowed us to specifically, um, address those skill gaps and reinforce some key concepts by strategically grouping students with teachers who specialized in their area of need. We created an environment where those personalized learning, uh, could really take place. The structure also, um, not only helped the students build those foundational skills necessary to master grade level standards, but it also boosts their confidence and their academic growth. Additionally, during win time, um, this allowed for some small group instruction, fostering deeper, uh, engagement, collaboration amongst students, and some one-on-one support. So really by prioritizing this targeted intervention, we're equipping our students with those skills that they're going to need for their future academic successes.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about what we offer during our win time. So, here's the tiers of what we offer. So first tier one, which is universal for all students, our core curriculum for ELA is Witten Wisdom, our math curriculum is illustrative math, and then we go into tier two, which is our targeted supports for students that may be struggling, need a little bit more to fill the gaps. So we offer 95% group phonics and vocab search at this time. Phonics helps students decode letters and sounds, vocab search teaches students how to break words into parts, hypothesize the meaning of unknown parts, and check meaning in context. LUMUS is a very exciting addition, our elementary schools are using this as well. LUMUS helps students prepare for standardized state tests by creating a unique learning pathway with targeted remediation. So this is a pretty big shift here because they take a pre-test, but it is on grade level. So the students are being exposed to the grade level content that they will see on MCAT, and then it creates them a pathway to work through to ensure that they are being exposed to that grade level content and works, works with them to master it. So this has been hopefully a very key component. This is tech-based, but we also have workbooks. We are just using the tech base this year, and then we will add in the workbooks next year as well. And then last, we have Alex for math. It identifies areas of mathematics where students need additional support, and students work at their own pace to master the skills through the Alex platform. And last but not least, our tier three interventions that we offer, um, this is intensive support for our students. First, we have all of our special educators trained in Orton-Gillingham, which is a structured way of teaching reading that is multisensory, sequential, cumulative, repetitive, and individualized. This is really nice that our special education teachers are now trained in Orton-Gillingham because this is the actual core curriculum used at the elementary level. It's like the Cadillac of all reading curricula. So our elementary students are using this, and then our students that may still be struggling with reading once they get to middle school, we have our special educators trained in this, uh, program, which is amazing. We also offer morphology. Our ELA teachers and some of our social studies teachers were trained in morphology this year. Morphology is the how, the study of how words are formed, where they come from, and how the small, how their small parts, called morphemes, shape their meaning and structure. At this time, we also offer Science Olympiad, STEM experiences. We are doing one school, one book this year, so our students are doing a novel study together one book this year, so our students are doing a novel study together during win time, and then our students also get their character counts lessons at this time on Friday, so we're offering a lot at win time, it's all hands on deck, all of our teachers have their own group, so this has been a bit of a shift this year that we're excited about.
For when is it daily, and how long is it?
Daily for thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, twenty-nine.
It's like troubletime.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Right.
So, I, I understand the, the intervention part, is there opportunities for students that need accept, that have exceeded that, we, what, you know, in the old days we would have called gifted and talented?
Accelerated, yeah, so that's, that's where the Science Olympiad and the STEM experiences coming in, yep.
Do it, oh, sorry. Just sorry, do, do any of these, um, programs offer, I mean, cause obviously you said, you mentioned that they were doing things on grade level, and so I just wasn't sure in terms of reporting to know, you know, is that student moving up a grade level, or, you know?
LUMUS is the only program out of all of these that will kinda keep you, like it's a, it will keep you at your grade level, so until you master all of that content, Alex will go above grade level, which is very nice, um, in addition, I mean, in addition with our Witten Wisdom offerings, and then our Illustrated Math offerings, they offer students additional supports if they're gifted and talented, or, you know, working above grade level as well.
So is, do you feel like the information's pretty accessible to be able to know like kids are improving, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perhaps what we can do is one of our follow-ups, bring a screenshot, like a tar, an example, so that people can sort of see how that's mapped out?
Yeah, that's really helpful.
And, and what like a progress report looks like.
Yep.
Okay, so then again, trying to highlight some of the successes that we've seen, so we're looking at our MAP and our MCAT data, uh, we see some pretty significant academic progress, and particularly, uh, math, so looking at Algebra One for MAP, thirty-eight percent of our students scored in the eightieth percentile or higher for growth, with a proficiency rising from thirty-first in the fall to forty-seventh in, in the winter, and again, this is MAP data, this is current this year data. For our math MAP, grades six through eight, forty-seven percent of our students scored in the sixty-eighth percentile or higher for growth, with sixth and seventh grades seeing a five percent increase in proficiency, um, some notable successes, seventh grade reached the sixty-fourth percentile for growth, and eighth grade hit the thirty, sixty-third percentile for growth as well. One of the pretty amazing points we got last year, which we were kinda shocked about, because we, again, part of our focus was to reclaim sort of some structure in the building, and then this has been really our academic focus year. Uh, last year's MCAT, uh, Algebra One progress, we went from just four students, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, to thirteen students last year in twenty-three and twenty-four, that's a nine student increase, we went from thirteen percent proficiency to forty-five percent proficiency, and that, and that's our highest flying students. Kinda put this in perspective, my oldest, when he went through, I think ninety-eight percent of the students passed the MCAT, math, Algebra One test in middle school, my youngest went through, eight percent of his class passed, so having us move in the right direction of forty-five percent now at a pass rate, we're getting back to where we should be, all of our STEM kids should be able to pass the Algebra One test, that should be a hundred percent pass rate.
And this is current data?
So this is, so the MAP is current this year, MCAT is last year's eighth grade, which is now this year's ninth grade.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think some of this data really just does highlight the effectiveness of our approach, and the hard work that our students and staff have put in, um, we are really excited to see what we do this year on MCAT, as like we said, we've really pushed the academics, the intervention time, the win time, all of that, you know, should pay huge dividends, time will tell, fingers crossed, all of that good stuff.
Just a quick comment, thank you so much, I mean, it, it really is astounding, you know, you know, the progress that's being made, I just, just because I heard, um, I can't remember, I was reading something where, uh, a board member suggested some type of monthly reporting on academic progress, and so I just wanted to put that out there, that if that's ever possible, that we could in some way get some kind of monthly report on progress, because obviously it is happening, and so I think it's important to keep showcasing that as often as we can, because, you know, to counteract the negativity that was, you know, I just, the more good news we can share, the better, and so, and, and to have numbers like this is, is.
Agreed, and I think also we've been trying to celebrate students in schools, we have like a LUMUS success board, and we shout out students on the board that are making progress, so I think it's just as important, you know, that, we need the backing of the community, but, you know, it starts with the kids, so I think, you know, really promoting it in schools, I know elementary schools have boards up with data, and so I think that's really great to celebrate the things that the kids are doing, and obviously we're very proud of our teachers, cause they're the ones making this happen.
Right.
Okay, so next, we have a huge focus on writing at KCMS, so for the past two years, it's really only been a year and a half, but for the past two years, we focused on writing in every subject area, our focus was really pushed because we made that our school-wide SLO, so for the past two years.
What's SLO?
Student learning.
Student learning objective.
Okay, sorry, I don't talk to talk.
Sorry, so this is, I'm sorry, so this is, um, essentially how teachers are evaluated at the end of the year, so you have to have two school-wide SLOs, and then teachers have to work towards our school-wide SLO, and then they have to have an individual SLO.
So again, just to reinforce that, data connection is linked to evaluations and school progress, right? So that there's a through line of accountability in the classroom, to the schoolhouse, to the system at large.
Yes, with, with that being said, we did kinda see, and me being in the classroom, I, I was thinking, sitting there, I actually taught almost someone from every person, family, two or three grandchildren, I taught your son, taught half the Swanson family, taught your daughter, so I, I think a, a big shift, um, that we really wanted students to see and teachers to see, that, you know, these SLOs, like you're like, what is that? They need to matter, right? It shouldn't just be a piece of paper, and I'm like praying that my numbers look good, they really need to matter, we really need to promote it, and promote it in the schools with our teachers, so with that being said, we focused on argumentative writing for the past two years, so all of our teachers had their hand in promoting argumentative writing, and making that our school-wide SLO, so in our PLCs, our professional learning communities, we focused on understanding writing standards and analyzing writing in all content areas, so with something like this, sadly, a lot of the pressure falls on our math and ELA teachers, um, we don't think that's really that fair, so with this argumentative writing, we made sure that all of our teachers had their hand in promoting writing and helping students become better writers, so at our PLCs when students left for half-day, we showed all of our content teachers the ELA and writing standards that usually ELA teachers are only aware of, um, and we had all of the teachers analyze student writing, using the com, the MSDE rubrics that the students are gonna be assessed on, on MCAT, and we had amazing feedback from our teachers, cause they were like, wow, thank you, you know, they're, they go to school for their content, right? So a lot of these teachers have never even seen the, sorry, have never even seen the ELA writing and reading standards, and they're like, thank you so much, this is so eye-opening, now I'm a social studies teacher, but I can reinforce these standards in my social studies classroom, so we're really all on the same page. They do write, and they do write in health and PE, our, our, our PE and health teachers are amazing, so we're writing in every content area, and it's really been a great shift, so all subject areas are focused on improving writing, all subject areas are using common rubrics, so if I go to social studies, I know I'm gonna be assessed using the same rubric that my ELA teacher is using, so that's been a great shift for our students, too, and then also, all teachers have helped grade and analyze writing pieces for our school-wide SLO, so the grading didn't just fall all on the ELA teachers, so that has been a nice shift, and I would like to keep focusing on writing at Kent County Middle School, so we're not gonna stop.
If I just may, um, add a minute around argumentative writing, why this is so powerful, what they're doing, and I know they really got into our ed you speak processes here, this matters so much because argumentative writing is either standard one or two in the writing standards, um, if you look across the content areas, and it is what is considered career readiness, right? It is where students have to analyze multiple sources, they have to formulate a stance, they have to justify that stance using evidence from the text that they use, it is what career readiness and college readiness looks like on a daily basis, so the fact that we are doing this with twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds is a prime example of when I say we in, invest robustly in our middle school, because we must build that muscle as early as possible, and the team is doing that, um, I also wanna give a compliment here, uh, much of what they described around their writing process and analyzing is exactly what Ms. Rose will speak to, that her team did last year, and we, uh, we were able to celebrate them moving forward, uh, in a star, so I just want you to see the alignment across our schools, and the particular, um, you know, workout that our middle school educators are, are providing our students every day to build that academic muscle, so, thank you.
Alright, so moving on, I know it's a lot, uh, we're just trying to highlight all the things, and it's been a lot of work to change a lot of things, um, but probably one of the biggest changes this year, and probably for me, the, the biggest change that's gonna impact Kent County Middle School moving forward, has been the schedule, um, so this year, um, we implemented a unified six-period day schedule for all grade levels, one schedule for the entire school, we incorporated this, um, really to, with the dedicate, with, I'm sorry, we also incorporated within that the dedicated intervention time. The shift here was previous schedule that we kind of inherited, and again, I didn't really have the chance to change it my first summer, like I hired nine people, including Ms. Melvin, um, maybe ten, uh, so it was a very busy summer, but anyway, the original schedule that I inherited was three different schedules for all three grades, there was double-blocked, uh, UAs, there were double-block plannings, it was a disaster, a lot of movement. Um, moving away from this, we've eliminated that, we've removed the double-block of unified art classes, there's no double-planning for the core teachers anymore, and what this has done is this has made a more equitable schedule for the entire staff, where everyone is working the same, same number of hours, um, it's also reduced a lot of unnecessary movement in, within the building.
Does that mean that classes changed for everybody the same?
Classes changed for everyone, just like, just like if it was a high school.
Okay.
Um, our students, you know, move throughout the day together, it's streamlined overall school experience, um, the really wonderful result of this is that it has done several things, one, it's reduced behaviors tremendously, because there's so much less movement, and so much less activity in students in the hallways.
Well, it's probably also easier to keep track of whether, if a kid's going halfway, they can't say, well, I'm changing classes, because nobody else is.
It's so much easier for staff and everyone, because, you know, you might not know if they're seventh grade, or sixth grade, or eighth grade, and so it's, you're not sure, cause, you know, let's be honest, there's some large sixth graders, or some small eighth graders, sometimes it's hard to tell who's where, and what grade, but probably one of the biggest thing is this, that it's really started to foster this really strong sense of community within the building, um, I can't tell you the number of times that you see eighth graders and sixth graders interacting, and it's just, it's just heartwarming to see, these eighth graders have taken some of these younger students under their wings, they're, because of this schedule, um, we do have some classes like PE, where one PE teacher might have a sixth grade group, and one might have an eighth grade group, and they're in the gym together, and they play together, and they have fun together, and they have like built these incredible relationships, which were never afforded to them before when they were on three different schedules, and so when you think about this, we're a very small county, a lot of our problems arise because we spend the same time with the same, you know, hundred-and-some kids since I was in kindergarten, or whatever, or I mean, some of those students I've been with since kindergarten, and some of them, you know, I'm with all through middle school, would ever, would never have an opportunity to expand to lower or higher grades until I get to high school, and then we put them in high school.
Represents a philosophical change, because there was a time when somebody would say, I don't want my sixth grader interacting with me.
I agree, I agree, and I think that, I think that it has been eye-opening to staff, because they anticipated that there would be a lot of problems, and there has been, there have been nothing but positives that have come out of it, so it is really, um, I mean, it really is the backbone of what we're doing, changing the schedule, and it has fostered such a sense of community, it is, it's pretty, pretty profound.
I would agree with that, with my daughter being in the seventh grade, one of the things in middle, elementary school she didn't like too much is, she only knew fifth graders, she only knew fourth graders, and now she actually knows sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, and she says it's actually better as pertaining to her friend circle, which she doesn't really have, but, her friend circle, because she's, I normally say, you don't know them, they're not in your grade, she was like, well, that, that's an eighth grader, you know, you know an eighth grader, and then my second comment is, I have noticed this, just even if I'm coming to pick up, uh, my daughter, uh, with my visit, about three years ago, you, the hallways was just jumping at all times, and when I came, every time I come, I'm like, it's not a lot of kids in the hall, it's not a lot of kids in the hall, but it's, it's kinda, you just explain why, um, just behavior-wise and perception-wise, cause, you know, people might not admit it, you go in that school lobby at the middle school, you're judging, because you can look right down the corridor of the school, and just assume what you're seeing, and all this year, I've seen nothing but empty hallways, one or two students, and I haven't seen that in a boat, well, I haven't seen it in Kent County, and to see it in the last year and a half, especially this year, I think is working very well, I see it with my eyes.
But thank you.
I just would like to, um, piggyback on that a minute, and compliment, um, Principal Buckle, because when I came on board in July, um, I very quickly started going around the schools, and I will tell you, he personally worked relentlessly on redesigning that schedule, um, it, by hand practically.
Yes.
It really consumed, it consumed a great deal of his summer, uh, but we can see the outcomes of that, and I, another compliment I wanna give him is, he made a strategic leadership decision reflecting a philosophy in the best interests of our students, not in, to what the adults would prefer, but what was in the best interest of our students, and we are seeing greater, uh, result as a, uh, outcome of that, so thank you for your leadership on that.
Appreciate that.
Agree.
Okay, so this is just a list of some programming and special offerings at KCMS, obviously each year we wanna add more, so this is some of the things we're offering now, so we offer STEM math and science classes, career counseling, and managing your future class, we brought back Science Olympiad, it was sad to see that go, but it's back, um, we created an eighth grade student leadership group, we have revamped, revamped National Junior Honor Society, we still have our AAEEBB group, we are creating a green team, cause we're about to be a green school, we offer girls on the run, and then the athletics that we offer are, is soccer, basketball, and cheer.
I have a question about the eighth grade student leadership group, just, I don't know, what is that, that seems interesting?
So you, there are some requirements to enter, so we look at grades, behavior, things like that, so this group helps us plan the dance, field day, any spirit weeks, spirit days, um, they'll help us with eighth grade graduation, so it's kind of an additional group, like if you, you know, didn't make it to National Junior Honor Society, it still offers students kind of a leadership role in a different capacity, so it's been really
Cool, sort of like an SGA, sort of?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's kinda like our version of SGA.
And that's what we wanted to do next year.
Like to maybe bring back SGA?
So we're kind of, this little stepping stone of eighth grade leadership.
Awesome, cool.
Okay, and so again, all this other stuff is great, but really we have to, we have to start fostering, um, and establishing some KCMS traditions, and strengthening our schools' community and the school spirit around, um, everything we're doing, so some of the events we've done, paint nights, math and magic night, kickball movie night, the Valentine's Day dance, which supports the Valentine's Project, Battle for the Banner, the science fair, the field day, Earth Day, One School, One Book, all these initiatives have really contributed to this goal, um, and I think the success of what we're trying to build was pretty evident when we had our recent science night, I think all of us were floored that we had over a hundred and sixty people come, not including our students, not including our staff.
It was so fun.
Um, our cafeteria was packed, bursting at the seams, everyone had an amazing time, uh, we're already thinking about how we're gonna expand it next year, it's gonna be in the gym, it's gonna be huge, like, it's gonna be, I mean, it was big.
I'm sorry, it was so amazing.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty impressive, and people stayed the whole time, uh, it wasn't like people just came in, I mean, I don't know if I saw anyone, I mean, we pretty much had to kick people out.
Yeah.
Like, it's over, it's, um, see you.
I mean, my four-year-old was enthralled with everything, so it was, it was amazing.
So just seeing that is, is really, you know, a testament to all the things we're trying to do to, to bring this back, um, you know, building a positive, inclusive community at Kent County Middle School is really essential, and engaging parents in that is vital, um, and we want everyone to take pride in our middle school, and we want everyone to think that this is the best place for your student to be to learn and grow, and that's really our goal.
Okay, last but not least, this is exciting, this is something that we're currently working on, and we're, we're, we will have it rolled out for this year, uh, we are creating a unified arts program of studies, so Kent County Middle School will have their own program of study, so on, I'm not gonna read all of these, but this is a list of some of the course offerings that our amazing unified arts teachers are creating, which will be present in our program of study, we have created, and they're doing that this week, an interest survey for our students, so all of these offerings will be in the interest survey, and the students will complete this in their win time with the teachers, they will rate the courses that they are interested in, and then we will figure out what we can offer on our schedule, so developing a program of study will ensure that our students are exposed to a well-rounded curriculum, but then also we can expose them to things that they're actually interested in, and try to build them a schedule that they're really excited about, so we're very excited about this, this is a long time coming, and again, like I said, this is some examples of some of the course offerings we would like to potentially offer.
I would just.
I'd like to say one thing, excuse me, I'm really impressed with what both of you have done in the last couple of years, that school was a mess two years ago, and you have really turned it around, I mean, it's, it's amazing, you know, you hear good stories about it, there's no fights, there's none of that is going on, and I'm just really impressed, and thanks for doing what you're, thanks for what you're doing, it's just wonderful.
I agree, the shift of culture, as fast as it shifted, just perception-wise, I'm in the know, I know a little bit more that goes on, because I know families in middle school thing, I will second what he said, the culture shift was kinda quick, and it's impressive, from my point of view, so thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Wait, hold on, I don't, you know, we, hold on.
Go, go.
A question, because we are discussing budget right now as a board of ad member. One, does the poly bath, is that there? Is it in any danger of being lost due to funding?
So that was kind of, we did that the first summer. We haven't, we don't, we haven't contracted her since then, and I believe, I don't know, Dr. King stepped out. I think she may have actually funded that the first summer.
Is that something you all would be interested in seeing go forward?
I mean, I think it was a, I mean, she's a great resource, I mean, I would never say no to it. I do think that she was a great, she was a needed foundation to kind of start our work.
But do you, don't you think maybe you can take it and run with it now?
I would say, yeah.
I think, I think a lot of it we can take and run with.
And like with poly bath, and we're sort of practices not to, you know, aid on companies or anybody, you know, treating businesses like that, it really is like, I mean, good teachers do that no matter what, right? So you build your foundation of teachers and champions, and that will never leave because it's just in your heart, you know? I mean, anyone could be poly bath.
Yes, yeah, agreed. And then, this is one concern I do have, outstanding job. And also just this presentation to Laura McKenzie's point, come back and do this more. Like, I don't want it to be so far in between where we're trying to figure out what's going on. These type of presentations also help perception in the community. It also helps board members understand exactly what's going on in our school district. My only concern is, a lot of this was great. I'm waiting to see the turnaround on the data in the academic department.
Us too.
So, that's, that's all, that's it. I'm just waiting, waiting to see the fruits of this labor so that way we, I can fully be like, okay, now that's a real, let's move it on, you know what I mean?
We agree.
I will just offer two things as we all eagerly await to see those numbers continue to change like we saw in the algebra. I just offer for everyone to know that when we look at change management, and there is extensive research around change management, and what should you anticipate? When should you anticipate to see data changes? What we know in school turnaround work is that in the first year, it is often all about climate, which is what our team spoke to, right? Because you have to create order and a culture of focus on academics and support. And so that is changing adult behaviors, right? And so you often, the measurable differences are in the adult practices and the adult behaviors, and then you begin to see the change in the behavior data amongst students, which again, we were able to speak to. And then you start seeing academic changes within three to five, usually it's within three years, you really start to see a change. By five years, you see sustaining, self-sustaining data points. Not that you need to wait five years to see a change, but just to proactively manage your expectation. When should we see change and what change should we see, at what case of change? And so adult behavior has to change before we see changes in student outcomes. So I think we are well on that track. The team and I have been talking about data and how do we present data to make sure that we are sharing with the whole community the progress that is happening. Our middle school has been and is and will continue to transform to be an unparalleled middle school experience, second to no one, okay? We aren't there today, but we will be there. And our team will be back, and we've talked about taking this show on the road to share the good news because there's many other members of our community who are invested in our schools, want to know that our schools are doing well for our, our students.
I think this would be something really good to share with like the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so anyway, so thank you, and thank you everyone for your support tonight. Great job.
Wait, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
One more question.
One more question?
Sure.
Sorry. I just wanted to know how the new phone policy has gone because.
It's definitely going a lot better in sixth grade.
Yeah.
Learning behavior is real. Phone addiction is real. It's, again, definitely going better in sixth grade, but like Mr. Buckle said, you know, if it's an issue with a student and the teacher talks to the student, you know, you're hindering the learn, your learning, you know, what, what value are you violating? You're distracting others in the room. That grounding it in the values, like you said, which you think is meaningful, it really, it really is meaningful. I think like Dr. McComas said, it takes kind of three years to change, you know, that mentality and that, you know, accepting the phones. But again, it's, it takes the staff.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So Mr. Buckle and I can't do it all. We really need to depend on the staff as well to, you know, enforce those expectations.
Yeah, because it's.
But I would say, it's still.
It's a lot better.
It's still, and it's still, the majority of students are doing the right thing every day.
Good, yeah, because it's a huge problem.
Eighth grade is going to be the, the challenging.
Where, I don't know, I just, do they have to, are they allowed to have it on them?
So we have pouches.
Pouches.
Which are supposed to put their phone in.
During the class, they put it in the pouch, and then they have them in the halls, they can have them at lunch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is nice. We allow them to have it at lunch, and if we get to go outside, they're allowed to have their.
When they go into the class, they're supposed to go in the pouch, and then the teacher decides, hey, I want to, you know, everyone's, we're really working hard today, you get five minutes of phone time, that's teacher's prerogative, but.
All right. A lot of teachers do rewards, like if the whole pouch is filled with phones, you know, you get a reward or you get a point towards a goal that you're working towards, so.
Right.
Got it.
Yeah.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Administrative Services. Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, members of the board. I'm here for Ms. Stewart tonight for our monthly fiscal presentation. So before you, you'll see through February 20th of 2025, these are all of our receipts so far. So Fund One consists of receipts from the county, unrestricted grants and funds from the state, restricted grants and funds from the state, current expense funds, and then other receipts. So that, that total is just a little more than $28.2 million for the year thus far. And then you can go down to Fund Number Five, which is our food service fund. School receipts thus far is a little over $52,000. And then our major funding from the state is about $826,000 so far this year, which brings us to a total as of the year of February, just a little more than $29.2 million. So if we slide down further into our current expense fund, so this is Fund One. This is where a lot of salaries, supplies, administration salaries are located for the year. So at this point in the year, we're at about 74%, which seems high because in your head you're saying, you know, we're not quite to 74% of the fiscal year yet, but keep in mind that the majority of this is salaries and instruction, which is all encumbered right at the beginning of the year. So, so it's very normal to be about 75% at this point in the year. So next.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How can you be more than 100%?
So there can be instances where needs arise during the year that we didn't have planned for.
Okay.
So, and typically what will happen is at some point here, a budget adjustment will come to move some funding from one of our other sources that has a surplus to kind of offset any other areas that, like I said, unexpected needs arise during the year, basically.
I use the example here, maintenance, we see, you know, we had this sewer problem at the middle school. That was an unforeseen emergency expense to repair the facility.
Exactly.
So the, the two things that are above 100%, they're in the negative. So I'm assuming, like you said, that, that those are expenses that go above what 100% would have been.
Exactly. And as Dr. McComas just mentioned, one of those categories is maintenance, which.
I got you.
We've had a few expenditures that obviously nobody foresaw coming, which have been very expensive. So, so those have unfortunately put us over what we're anticipating for the year, but it is a normal process.
So, follow up question to Ms. McGee's point.
Sure.
I understand, you know, something with maintenance, but administration, that's not locked in?
Well, that would be like law, legal fees.
Okay.
Remember, administration is not just my salary. It is all of the.
The school system. It's not a person, it's, yeah, I get you.
Understood.
Right, so.
Any other questions for Fund One?
No, thank you.
Fund Three is our school construction fund. As you can see, we're still in the process of planning and design for the middle school, and I know I can speak to this because this is one of the areas that I kind of oversee myself, and it looks like we're not spending any money on planning and design for the middle school, which is, is not the case. Basically, the Maryland State and Authority is, is holding the contracts for our engineering and architectural firm, and then upcoming for our construction manager. So originally, before this budget season for this current year, we were thinking that we would have to house those contracts, but MSA is housing them for us, so.
Well, they're kind of thankful, aren't they? Yeah.
Exactly. So at some point here, we'll also have to do an adjustment to basically remove the funds from our budget here to more, become more aligned with what's actually going to happen by the end of the year here. And then you can see our, Canadian High School tennis court project is completed, so hopefully they're enjoying, you know, new services out there. So at some point here, we are waiting on the final invoice to come in, and then we'll have our reimbursement request into the state for that project.
I will say the tennis team had a huge turnout.
But I agree with that.
That may have been reflected on the fact that they have new courts.
Agreed.
Hopefully. All right, so we go down to Fund Five, which is our food service fund. So at this point in the year, we're at about 64%. As I mentioned earlier, that's also predominantly upfront costs of our salaries and wages. So, any questions for food service? All right, and then finally we have our restricted funds, which at this point in the year is about 45%. So these are all of our grants, things of that nature. Any questions overall for us?
No.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Procedure 300-2, Sexual Discrimination and Harassment Update.
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school club members, hello again. I think I'm up here the next, for the next three items. Just real quickly, earlier this year, we updated our Sexual Discrimination and Harassment Procedure 300-2 due to some updated guidance that we received from the Office of Civil Rights with some new regulations. I stand before you tonight because due to a recent federal court case, we now have to revert back to the procedure that we had in place between 2020 and the start of the 2024 school year. So you'll see, as an attachment tonight, I put forward our old, or our older procedure that we had prior to August 2024, and that is what we need to go back to as a result of this court case.
The one you're going back to, is it going back to the latest edited and updated version?
So the latest, so, so, so the latest edited and updated version prior to what we brought forward earlier this year. So the version that was in effect in August is from 2020 to August 2024, that is the version that we're reverting back to.
How long was the new version in effect, or did it even get changed?
I believe we brought it forward in September.
Yeah, I remember talking about that, I think. So this is something we have to implement, we can't. Can you go over some of the language that was changed? I'm aware that there was some stuff about gender identity, I think that was removed.
Yeah, so I'm going to defer to Adam here in a second, but one of the big, the big things, one of the big changes was the grievance procedure and the process of investigating a claim. Adam is.
Yeah, sure. So actually, on, on your specific point about the application of Title IX to gender identity and sexual orientation, here in Maryland, actually not all that much has changed because we have to follow precedent from the Fourth Circuit, US Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit, which covers Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina. So we're still bound by the precedent that applies directly to us, which, so, so in light of, you know, a lot has changed at the federal executive branch level, but as far as the judicial branch, which applies to us and their interpretation of Title IX, nothing's really changed lately on that. So, so kind of, just kind of hanging tight, nothing's really changed there. The only, the only difference is the Title IX regulations that were promulgated in 2024 to go into effect in August, they changed some of the standards for what's considered actionable harassment under Title IX, and changed some of the investigative processes. We're reverting back to standards that were in place in 2020, which contained a higher standard for what is considered harassment, a bit more due process protections throughout the grievance procedure. Those are kind of the biggest changes, I would say, the biggest differences between 2020 and 2024.
Okay, it's not as drastic as I thought. Thank you.
Right, it's, it's really not, like, for, in Maryland, it's really not a huge shift because we still follow Fourth Circuit. Yeah.
Thank you.
And that was for information.
Information only. Yep.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Media credentials.
Yes, so this item is for information only as well. It is, it is a new procedure that, that our admin team is going to be implementing, although it's not a new practice. And Dan is here to walk you through the script, but just to give you a high, the level overview of what is in this procedure, has been what our, what our past practice has been. We have started to work with other school systems across the state who have implemented similar procedures as well, with the idea of student safety and just keeping students safe, and, and it strictly is just pertaining to sideline access for media credentialing, with also having a formalized approval process that is now formalized in this written procedure.
Yeah, I just want to add a little context to this. So this is a growing concern across the state. We did confer with other school systems, and even when you look at the MSP, I'm going to say the wrong.
State Athletic Association.
Yeah, thank you. You know, even for like, things like wrestling and some of the other sports, and I want to clarify, people can still take pictures, but from the stands, okay? And I know that some people, that's not where they want to take their pictures from, but that you can still do that, but from the stands. And it really does come back to safety and security. So at that, I'm going to let the team go ahead and talk through that, but.
Yeah, just to, on, on like Dr. McComas' point, we did work with the State Athletic Association to see what their procedures are, you know, at the state level, and they do not allow the videographers and photographers at their state sanctioned athletic tournaments unless there is a media credential. So I'm going to call up Dan, let him kind of walk through the draft that we are bringing forward, just to kind of give you a high level overview.
All right. Good evening again, board members, President McGee, Vice President Queen. So what we looked at was, again, the State Athletic Association has very clear standards and guidelines. We also consulted directly with Wycomico County, and we wanted to have another presence on the shore. We looked at some larger counties like Baltimore County. We also looked at Cecil County. Much of the language that has been incorporated into this falls directly in line with those other counties. So from a high level, what we're really doing is defining what is media. And in this case, the procedure outlines that this is about news gathering, media outlets. It talks about organizations with editorial oversight. You know, we specifically state, organizations that are scouting, ranking, or recruiting services, college coaches, private clubs, specialty websites that are promotional services will not be granted media credentials because they are not news media. We also have, parents and privately hired photographers will not be approved for media credentials, right? So this is very narrowly focused to allowing who has courtside access, who has fieldside access.
who has courtside access, who has fieldside access during athletic competitions. So again, you can take photos from anywhere in the stands. Where the public's allowed to go, you're allowed to take photos. There's no expectation of privacy there. You as a parent want to take photos, you as a parent hire a service to take photos. They are allowed to take them from the stands. All right? Only those with news media credentials will be granted that closed sideline access. So that's really what we wanted to spell out with this. We really needed to memorialize these statements in a, in a procedure that we're already acting on.
I just had a question. Oh, just wondering, just because of the concern that was brought forth when we think about consistency and logistics of in real time, how things are monitored and how access is, you know, granted in a fair manner. Like, how, how, how does that work out logistically? Like, what are we, changes are we making so that things are done consistently?
Yeah, well, it's, as you know, I, and I'll just kind of frame this in a larger context. You know, earlier this year, and this is separate, but in the entire context, what I experienced in going to just one, like, our one football game against Cambridge and some of our, our other athletic events is we have work to do as a community to bring order and structure to our athletic events. Right? And so I had, you know, as you know, at one game, closed the game to the public. Right? Because we had visitors that did not conduct themselves appropriately. So this, to me, to getting to your point, this is part of really codifying our standard operating procedure. Right? That we've sort of had some practices. And I really am about bringing order to, to that so that we can focus on the game and kids and not win all kinds of adult needs here. So I'll let you go ahead and talk about the procedures of how we, how we identify who can be where, which I think is the heart of your question. But I just want to frame this. So we have work to do as a community to bring order and structure to our athletic events. And I know, as I have spoken to leaders in other school systems on the eastern shore, I, I had one of, another superintendent was like, it's gotten out of control. Right? And so I know that this is something very specific, but it's part of that larger effort to, to really kind of bring things in a focused orderly way. So, thank you.
So as part of this procedure, there's also going to be an application that will come through the high school principal and the supervisor of athletics and the athletic director. Reason why, you know, another reason why we bring this forward is because past practices, this is not something that has happened this year. This happened with the prior superintendent where folks would call and ask, and it was a simple no. But now we have a, a actual process with an application where there will be an actual, like, using given yes or no. So, you know, it's also a totally equity that, that there is a process and we're not just picking and choosing who we're saying yes or no.
But I, just wondering, you know, because when, you know, because I mean, things can just be messy, like, when we think of the day of, just because there's a lot of moving parts at any specific event. And so that's where I'm wondering, like, is there an additional staff person that's identified for monitoring in real time what's happening at a game?
Coming from a news media background, I can tell you that a news outlet with the required editorial oversight, those are assignments that are handed out to go cover that event, and they're handed out in advance because those schedules are posted live. They know that it's a game of interest. And so that application has already been submitted. Also, we have built into this that you don't have to apply for each individual's game. Right? Once you're sort of approved overall, you have the credentials you need for the season at the least. Now, they can be revoked if you don't follow the procedures and expectations. But again, as an established news media outlet, you are covering this in an organized manner. You have planned to be there. You aren't making a last minute decision to just show up at a game. That's part of the editorial process.
I guess, you're, you're really talking about how do we manage where they are.
Right, like, you know, just because a field's a big place, or you know what I mean? And just like, when you think about people from other counties coming in and like, how would we know and how to identify in that moment?
Well, I was going to, a couple of things. First of all, because I've been, in my many years, been told once or twice, the officials will tell a photographer if they can or cannot be where they are. That's, that, that's one of the things. I just, I was, if I can ask a couple of questions, is this, I see it specifically about sporting events, but there are other events. I was thinking, to be honest with you, when I was at the play last Friday, I saw people walking up and, and sort of impeding, first of all, our view because they were standing there with, with their cameras. And, you know, especially at the end of the first act, when Little Simba went running up the hall, you know, up the aisle. If a photographer had been standing there, there could have been a collision. So I'm just wondering, I guess, sports have gotten maybe the most attention, but is this going to be a broader policy? Because there are other things that, you know, whether it's graduation or some, some, you know... And I'm only think, I'm only most familiar with the high school, but there are events at every school where parents and other people are interested. So do you see this at some point being a little broader?
I think that's something that we need to discuss internally. But I do just want to clarify, this is not a policy.
I know, I used, I used the wrong word. I know, I got that. And as a procedure, it's just for our information. So is there a policy behind it? I just, I kind of want, no, okay.
We, we don't currently have a board policy. What I would say is, I certainly agree with you that any of their productions where, you know, the, the whole point here is to maintain order.
No, I get it.
Right, and safety. So certainly the examples there.
Not to interfere with the actual play because a photographer can mess up a, if they're in the wrong place at the wrong time, that can really affect the outcome of a, a play or something like that.
The other thing I offer in putting this, like, in writing and for, I'll just share with myself. I had a gentleman call me in the fall and was pretty much telling me that he had a right to be where he wanted to be on that, on that sideline. And I clarified for him that that was not accurate. He should not have that right. And then, of course, then he wanted to say, well, you know, Queen Anne's, and I, well, then go to Queen Anne's, right? But I, what it said to me is, we need to put in writing what we expect, and then we need to be consistent, which I, I respect that the call to be consistent and to be clear on how we organize and communicate that. Because, you know, when I have outside vendors who are hired by whoever to call me and tell me what, you know, like, like, no, you actually don't have that right. That's a safety issue. That's a management issue, an administration issue. And so it, it just drove home to me the point that as a community, we need to put in writing what we're doing, how we're doing it, why we're doing it.
And with this memorialized, this will also provide us the educational opportunity for our own staff and administrators so they have a real frame of reference as to how to...
Because it has not been consistently...
Which is, has been the issue in the past. Because, a couple of things. One, I think this is needed, but to Trish's point, I agree because it looks like you're singling out sports. And if this is a draft, I think anything with media, videos, social media, content should be within this parameter. But some of my questions are, like, to the point of, not this, I don't want to use names, but the family that came up here earlier. I know how big what that kid does on the shore. Some of these rules kind of eliminate the community feel of it. Let the kids get from their self-social media interaction when you put things like you must have a media credential or editorial experience. Well, a lot of kids coming from the community and a lot of families that, you know, kind of pour into these type of things that sports don't have that. So what would be, I guess, would be the verbiage or language you would say to a family that don't feel like the little guy's getting switched out so to speak?
If I might, two points to that. One, as far as getting training and experience, we do have within this a procedure that would allow a student journalist to apply for media credentials. They need to have a letter of recommendation from their teacher for that. And then to the community aspect of it, again, they're welcome from anywhere in the bleachers, anywhere the public is allowed to sit. We've talked about saying we could make available for them that first row of seating. You know, especially if a family has hired somebody for recruiting purposes. But again, we're not going to give that sideline access because there's limited space there. We can't have it overcrowded, especially with vendors vying for competitive space to get photos of students in action.
No, I agree, they shouldn't be on the sideline.
Right, well, and I will also say, I think there is a distinct, as I was myself thinking through this and working through this, and we have been deliberating on this since October. So this is not something that we just, you know, whipped up and, and... Because it became more and more evident, evident to me as we went season by season, how important it is to put our expectations in, in writing. Is, there's a difference when you're reporting for the whole community to have information on how the game is going? As opposed to you're focused on a single athlete, right? That's a very specific purpose that does, that serves that family, but doesn't serve the whole community, right? And so, you know, who, who are we going to allow? Like, those, that's, the, the reporting that is informing the whole community on how the game went, right? It's not about an individual student having particular, like, monopoly of the...
Access.
Access, if you will. And so, you know, I appreciate the team identifying ways that we can work with those families and not yet allow them on the sidelines. And I just want to come back because I felt like I didn't get a chance to answer your question. I think to that point of the management in the site, that's really where we depend on the school, the athletic director, and the, the adults that are working the game as to who's, where, what stations. I know when I have run athletic games as a school administrator, you know, I had my team of teachers who were on duty that night. Your station's here, here, and here. If you have a problem, you have a walkie, you call me. I come over and I address the issue. So, and I, you know, I think that that's ongoing work around, again, managing our athletic events. And, and forgive me, Ms. McGee, because I, I think you're right. It's not just athletics, it's any event where we're bringing the community.
No, I understand urgency is probably sports related, but when I was reading the procedure over the weekend, I was thinking there's a broader application.
Absolutely.
Can I, I'm sorry. I, I've got one question, and I know it's just for, for board information, and I didn't see it in there, but it might be in there. I didn't know if you thought it was important to include, a request must be made 24 hours in advance or 48 hours in advance. I mean, you don't want somebody right on top of it, of the event, saying, I mean, because that just, first of all, it's one of those kind of things somebody might not be able to address right then. So I just didn't know if there was somewhere in there that that would be important.
I agree.
May I say something? Did you, did you have it in the...
It might be in there, and I missed it, guys.
It might be in the application itself.
I think, I think, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Application.
Ms. McGee, I think Mr. Rhodes is waiting.
I have, I have a fair amount to say on this whole subject. First of all, this procedure is by far exclusionary. It violates the U.S. Constitution. And I'm going to read what it says, Amendment One. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or the right of people peacefully to assemble and petition the government for the relief, the redress of grievances." Now, we are a public institution, correct?
We are, we are, Mr. Rhodes.
I just want to continue.
I know, I, I could, please do.
I have a problem with this whole thing. So the main reasons our school system is not advancing, there are too many administratives at KC High School that have been here too long and feel entitled to advance their agendas. Entrenchment needs to go. Our sports students deserve better. Dr. McComas, your answer that this document is for safety is not clear. This safety word covers up the main problem with Kent County High School. This is a clear cover-up for the Kent County High School administration's real intentions. They want total control. This is about the students, okay? The students should come first. Do our coaches actively promote the students' accolades? I, I hear otherwise. So I'm going to go through this real quick. "The purpose of this procedure is to set forth specific requirements and guidances for members of the news media to request and obtain credentials to cover athletic events held by KC, PS, and outline standards of behavior and reporting. This is exclusionary. It violates the Constitution, the First Amendment. Credential procedures on, on a first, on a serve basis, and this dependent on space available at a facility. The KC Public Schools Supervisor Athletics, is that what you are?"
I'm the superintendent.
Okay, but it says right here, Supervisor of Athletics, the school's principal or athletic director, so...
Mr. Hudson is the supervisor of athletics.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I'm glad I know that. "We'll review requests on media credentials for athletic events. This is exclusionary and does not meet the First Amendment. Criteria for the approval of media credentials includes: Organizations must have credibility. Organizations must have editorial oversight. Organizations must create original content that can only be generated by being on-site or activity. Organizations' coverage must go beyond the distribution of in-game scoring statistics, updates, and highlights." Okay, now, this is where I have a problem. "Organizations that are scouting, ranking, or recruiting services, college coaches, private clubs, or specialty websites that are promotional services for the activity will not be approved. That means that if a student wants to be filmed for his event, you're not going to prove it." And there's all kinds of writing in here. Let me finish before you say anything. I want to go through what, my whole thing here. I have a feeling there's all kinds of outs in here where they cannot approve, they can do this, they can do that. There's openings for the high school to take total advantage of what the students want to do. "Parents and privately hired photographers will not be approved for media credentials, nor will they have access to fields, courts during athletic events. Credentials will not be considered for booster clubs, spirit groups, non-media community organizations, or other coaches to take footage or footage of athletic events. This is exclusionary and does not meet the First Amendment of our Constitution." Now, it's, get a load of this. "The school's principal or athletic director may, there's a word in here, 'may', approve credentials for KCPS students engaged in journalism, studies, and pursuits. This is exclusionary and against the First Amendment of our Constitution." Now, I'm going to read the next page because this is really important, too. "The KCPS Supervisor of Athletics, the school's principal or athletic director may deny or revoke an individual's media credentials for non-compliance with KCPS policies and conduct, behavior, activities for which there are reasonable grounds to believe violate state or federal law or constitutes a breach of professional ethics. This is again exclusionary and goes against the First Amendment rights of our students." Who come first, correct? Okay. "Approved members of the media must have their credentials visibly displayed on their person at all times while covering athletic events. This is exclusionary. If you don't have a badge, it's sort of like you're in some foreign country where you got to have a badge saying who you are. And you say these, you have areas where people can, can take photographs. I think this is, there's all kinds of outs in this where they can say, no, you can't come in." Okay, so, "Members of approved media outlets are to remain in the dedicated media areas during athletic events. Field-court access will be limited to designated areas. Elaborate, this opens the door to exclusionary tactics. Members of the media must coordinate with KCPS athletic staff." Exclusionary again. So I want to read something here. I have some testimonials from a bunch of students. Now, I wasn't going to mention their names, but I don't want any reposes against them. And there's a whole bunch here. I'm going to read this. The first one. "Yes, I like being videoed during sports events because it gives me the opportunity to send my video out to college coaches and to show me where I need to improve at. Video, videoing is not just for the look, it's for improvement and lifelong opportunities." The next person. "For me, being videotaped and photographed means more than just college recruiting. I don't see myself playing college sports, but it's a way for my mom to do something she enjoys, which is photographing and also getting videotaped as a team helps show flaws that may have, may have or are able to improve on them. On top of that, it is a way for me to share my passions with others as well as showing family members and friends who may not be able to make it to games I am doing." This, this is the next one. And you know, you know all these folks, but I'm not going to mention their names. "Yeah, I do like being videoed and photographed while playing sports and think it's important. One reason is the memories I have when looking at the pictures from even last year and remember the teams from the freshman year. Another reason is college recruiting." Another reason is college recruiting. And the last reason is it helps me connect with the new people when I post online, and people comment and ask questions about it. I feel stronger connection. This next person, yeah, I like being recorded while playing sports. Why? For colleges to see my film. The next one, yes, I like being videoed when I play. I like to watch them when I get home, or look at the pictures people take of me and improve, and look back on them and see how I did. The next one, yes, I use the clips to put on my recruiting questionnaire. I also post the photos on my social media that I think to the recruiting questionnaires. I also have an uncle who lives in Arizona, and I send the clips to him. And my dad can't always make the games, so my mom and I share photos and stuff with him. The next person, yes, I love being filmed, and it helps me get a better opportunity out there in the world, so colleges can see my talent and accomplishments. It approves my performance in games and helps family that isn't close to see what I do. Yes, you can use names, oh, well, that's for permission.
Mr. Rhodes.
Hold on, I'm going to, I have one more thing to read, I'm going to, I'm not going to stop.
Okay.
Don't beat your gavel, okay?
I didn't beat my gavel, I was just going to say, I think we, we get the idea, and I.
Well, I'm going to read it, just let me keep going.
Okay, I'm not going to stop you, I just want to remind you, this is a procedure. We don't have any say over it.
Okay, well, I don't know who does, but, okay, now. I enjoy being filmed a lot. Honestly, the media plays a very important role in the kids' exposure, and it gives the kids an opportunity to expose themselves, not only in Kent County, but to the rest of the world. The media doesn't only play a positive role for the kids, I believe it is positive for the coaches and the school also. I wish I had the opportunity to be filmed for sports because I think it would help me a lot. And I know there's all these kids, the last one here, there's just one more. College memories and to share with family and friends also as a positive representation. I respectfully ask that this procedure be permanently shelved to defend the rights of our students. They all have the right to be filmed playing sports, and that's what we're here for, for the students, correct? And you say it's all safety? I think it's, I think it's the high school wants to cover up, they want total control of the kids, that's my opinion.
I know, thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and thank you for sharing all the student points of view, and those who gave you, you know, their, their community point of view to share. I do want to clarify, I do have the authority to establish management, regulation, safety guidelines, which is what I've done, that's not violating anyone's right, and people do have the ability to do all the videotaping they want from the stands.
But it says right in here, there's, it could be denied, right?
That's, that's from being on the sidelines, Mr. Rhodes, I want to clarify, they can't be on the sideline, right down there, but they can, they're welcome in the stands to videotape and take pictures all they want.
I still think this is exclusionary, and it violates the First Amendment rights. That's what I'm saying, that's what I feel.
Okay, thank you for sharing.
A quick question, though, just to Mr. Rhodes's point, to prevent any potential for, because we, it is a small community, so just to prevent any potential for, I just wonder if someone outside of this specific group of Supervisor of Athletics, the Principal, is someone maybe, I don't know who that would make sense, but someone maybe not as connected that maybe could have a less, a more impartial perspective on, on the approval process, could be included with, approved in an application?
Well, that's, that's really our central office leader of athletics, Mr. Hudson, and then after him, it's me.
And then?
And, and this is, we do have a small, we have one high school, right? So, I think, you know, it's easy for people to, you know, try to, to work around the process, that's why we're trying to put it in writing to make it consistent.
Could I ask a question?
You go ahead first.
Because I'm getting confused now. We are talking about, I, I thought that we were saying that if you had a license or permit or, you know, to do it, then you, you apply or put your entry in, and you would be, you know, able to do what you need to do. If not, then you were just someone like me, you have access to the stands where you'd be safe, and then the school will not have to pay out a lawsuit when a child trips over you, or, you know, and you've got to think about this. I know sometimes when we think about things, we only think about one at a time, but if you start to have where everybody, because we are in a time where pictures and social media and everything is on the up, you know, and what I'm saying is, is that if, if you have where you don't have some regulations and some rules, some standards, et cetera, just imagine how many students we have, imagine how many parents there are, grandparents included, you know, father, mother, sister, brother, or whatever, and if you had everybody trying to be up close and taking a picture at the same time, because if you don't have some type of regulation set, then you can't stop one over here and then let one go over here. So, we have to, out of, for safety purposes, set some kind of standard or set some kind of rules. I mean, it should be understandable, you can't have 100 people, and the children are trying to play, and now we've got all this chaos, and, you know, everything's out of order, and we're going to try to, you know, figure out what to do after the fact. I mean, I, I'm just saying, I, I don't think it's trying to stop anything. My son played basketball, and I recorded him fine up top. Now, I know what they're trying to do, a lot of this is to promote and different things like that, but we, we'll have to figure it out, how to do it where it works for that particular person with the rules that are established, that's already in hand. You can't come into a building or come somewhere and overstep what's already been laid out. So, I think it's a good idea to lay some rules out because it doesn't take, it doesn't take a whole lot for somebody to fall over top or someone or whatever, and the school system will be responsible. We will have to pay that lawsuit, you know? If you don't set anything in place, then that'll be your fault for not setting it in place, and everything's out of order, then you're going to have to pay, so.
And, and then with, with this, well, first of all, what she's implementing is done across the state, across the country, it's done in all school systems. Safety is one, but also control and the proper authority for sporting events. Now, if we talk media, that's a bigger issue about who the chain of command might be, but in sporting events, it starts with the principal, Supervisor of Athletics, and the Athletic Director, they are the state governors in their school building or their local district of who governs and watch over the safety of the school. I had a youth program in Kent County for 10 years. We got videos below on YouTube, not one time did anybody in my organization record from the sidelines. As a coach, I think personally it's disrespectful. Now, if the coach says cool, that would be one thing. If we didn't have nothing in place, but it's disrespectful to what's going on, on the actual playing field, regardless of what sport it is, of camaraderie, safety, communication between teams. If you can't take quality videos from the stands with the same effect, just being three feet closer, I think that brings a bigger issue in the conversation that's not for our board. I also was saying, closing, I think what we have drafted should be looked at as possibly policy down the line as well, so that way it kind of doubles down on the effect of safety and control. A lot of the things we're trying to do now with the new board, new superintendent, is change some of the complacency and the entitlement, and I don't mean Dogus family at all, by no means I don't mean you all, but anyone, the entitlement of just saying, I know this person, and I can do this, it's taken a lot of that away, and a lot of what I heard when I was campaigning is transparency and communication, and I think this, does this 100% from start to finish with the process. I do agree, maybe we've got to add more media in that, but just sports alone, it's really not that big a deal. I've sent players to college, I've coached the best players in this high school, it is not that big a deal.
My, my only, well, just because it does say on a first-come, first-served basis, and you were mentioning that it's not per event that people are having to apply, is that correct, or is it per event?
It's, it's more based on season. And the, the demand hasn't dictated.
Okay.
That we set a prescribed limit. If we do hit that kind of point, then we would take a holistic approach to that, and looking at who we give priority to, such as those folks that are Kent County-based, as opposed to, say, a Baltimore City TV station coming in. So, we, we would look at those balances as we go forward.
And Dr. McComas said something that I think actually was tied to point in. Set people are coming to do this player, this player. Media speaks to the bigger picture of the community, and then also, if we want media coming out from the community, we wanted to represent the Kent County Public School system as a whole. With what was said by Ms. Dogus earlier, I do have one concern, that the picture from their video.
Yeah.
Were used on our website. Now, I do think that's a gripe that should be, you know, looked into.
I have a problem with that, too.
Yeah, but that would be the only thing I really have a gripe about, but everything else that I've read today, if it was even up for a board vote, I would vote in favor of this.
I want to say that any inference that our Athletic Director, our Supervisor of Athletics, or that our Principal could not be objective in filtering through this, I find offensive. You know, they're in a position of leadership, that's their job, I don't think it's exclusionary, but I don't think, I, I, why would you pull somebody else in to be objective when they're completely removed from being familiar with the situation? So, I'm, I'm, I don't want to be argumentative to Ms. McKenzie, but I'm, I'm going to push back on that policy, because I don't see any way that they would not be impartial in doing their job.
Those are the three people who need to do that as a change to this.
Well, thank you, everyone.
This was for information?
Yeah, I know, and I want to ask Alden, because she's an athlete.
Um, with my.
Now, her brother's an athlete, and you've got a lot of friends who are athletes.
Yes, um, and I think there is validity to Frank's point about the memories and about the usefulness of video, but I really don't think that this, like, since it is just sidelines, it is purely safety. It's safety and it's respect, I don't go to a lot of basketball games, but it's respect for the players, for the game, like, it's interference and a distraction with, there's, there's cameras flashing in your face, I'm, like, and the, I don't know, I agree with what you guys have said about it.
In sports, it makes that one player who know the camera's there for him lose the team concept and becomes a problem with in-coaching, which I've seen at this school when people show up for the highlight reel.
So, if someone, I'm just wondering, if someone is denied, what options do they have?
They, they are welcome to call me, and then I will talk through the policy and procedure and clarify why they didn't qualify.
But they can record from the stands, right?
I would serve as an appeal. You know, I, I understand that some are not happy with this. I'm, I'm not hired to make everyone happy, I'm hired to create a safe environment for our students to do their athletics, a safe environment for our spectators to enjoy. Again, people can videotape, and they can take their photography from the stands. This is not an unreasonable procedure.
Agreed.
And, and so, I'm happy to talk to anyone who wants to appeal that, but, you know, being a leader, you make decisions that people don't like, and sometimes people, you know, target you for that, but that's okay. I'm here to make a decision about how to run an orderly game, and to clarify, because we have a lot of people who, who are, you know, feeling like they should be wherever they want to be, and that's not, that's not the case.
And you all have been studying this since October, correct?
Yes, we have been talking and debating and reaching out to other school systems and looking at what the state does, and trying to formulate a thoughtful policy that is reflective of a growing trend, and I will tell you, as we spoke to athletic directors, central athletic leaders, and other superintendents across the state, this is a growing problem. Fortunately for us, we have one high school. There are school systems that, you know, have many, many, many high schools, and they're experiencing the same, this, this increasing uptick of people who are really there to record a specific student for, you know, recruiting purposes, whatever the case may be, and they're not there to report for the whole community to know how the game did, and, and so, they're there for a particular purpose, and they're, they don't belong on the sidelines. I know they want to be there, but that's not where they belong.
And question for them, from what I used to know, Max Prep Sports, the team actually might have, you know, team manager in the crowd recording, you upload this footage, I think a lot of what's going on is the kids feel like they're not being exposed, you know what I mean? I think that's more on coaching, to get the word out, to talk to colleges, to get the information out, because they should have game field.
So, and there are other systems, like Huddle, where.
Yes.
Where lots of teams will subscribe, actually, teams can go in together, where actually there are instances where booster clubs on the Eastern Shore actually support that process so that they, the kids can make their own highlight tape.
Yes.
Based off of the film that was, like, recorded, and college coaches have access to that as well.
I got one last question for this. For the actual approved media, are we requiring any liability insurance on their behalf? Let's say, just for example, Trish McGee.
Mm-hmm.
Gets approved, and Trish.
I get run over, and my leg gets broken.
Who does that liability fall on? Us, or should she have insurance for her company, her LLC, her business, whatever, whatever her editorial experience is under, who carries that umbrella of liability?
I believe that would.
I would think that's my own responsibility.
The risk of injury when they, you know, stand on the sideline, there's a defensible assumption of the risk.
That's what I would assume.
Yeah.
Is that in the application process, like?
A waiver?
Yeah.
No, but that is, we can certainly add that.
Because we don't want any liability on us, period, if you're on the sideline, because I've seen where kids run into cheerleaders who that fall on, I mean, it would fall on us because they're public schools.
Well, we watch a professional football game, how many times has a player been pushed out of bounds and knocked either official or photographer over?
College basketball games, that whole bank of photographers under the net.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. McComas, I just want to say, I appreciate your availability to, to be, you know, because, you know, anytime we're dealing with human beings, there's the potential for bias, that's just human nature. And so, you know, to have someone to just, because it, it's inevitable that someone may want to have discussion with you. And so, I just, I think it's important to have that availability, because anytime we're working with people, there's the potential for bias, and I think that's normal human nature, and so, I just wanted to express that.
Well, I think, and I appreciate that, you know, all procedures have appeals, right? So, I would be that appeal, that, you know, again, I will listen, I will review the procedure, and, and we will go from there, so I, I make no, I can't make a decision until I have an appeal, right? But again, this is about safety, it's about administration and orderly organization and orderly conduct of our athletic events or other events, and again, people still can take videos and photographs from the stands, so. And as we mentioned, there are other ways that some teams do that and else, other places, so.
I also just want to shout out and appreciate the access for Kent County Public School students, high school students, to go through a process and be able to do that, I think that's important, and I'm glad it was brought up in here.
Yes.
Because they do take pictures from your book, where they have the pass.
And that's a learning process, that's part of the teaching and learning process. Yep.
Anybody else have anything else to, what's this? Thanks, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for the robust conversation.
Sole source contract approval?
Yes, so, this is an action item. As you are all aware, we've had a difficult time up the high school with filling our special education teacher openings. The Dr. Keen who was in the crowd was actually just drove down to a job fair down at James Madison University, as well as all of the other recruiting efforts and job advertisements and interviews that we have held to find qualified special educators. At this point in the school year, we've been unsuccessful in doing so. So, tonight, what I have before you is to bring forth a third-party contractual agreement for a high school special education teacher at Kent County High School. Due to the current staffing needs and increasing difficulties to recruit special education teachers, the administration is recommending, recommending approval of a sole-source contract with Reliant Health LLC for the remainder of the year for a total of $33,750. Now, per procurement policy and procedures, this is under the $100,000 limit, but we wanted to bring this forth tonight because it is a sole source. While Dr. Keen and her team have been working with various hiring agencies, specifically Voca Vision, Sunbelt, anyone else, Dr. Keen?
Yeah, there's a lot of them, there's a lot.
And through that work, we could not find somebody that would be an in-person special education teacher. Some of these agencies had special education teachers available, but they would only be available virtually, and in the needs of our kids, we need people to be in-person full. to be in-person full-time. So with that, we are recommending approval for this sole source contract for this one special educator, and upon approval, we'll be able to start the onboarding process on our side.
Two, two questions for me.
Yes.
Explain what you meant by the hundred, under the $100,000 mark.
Yeah, so, and I can let Mr. Kirby jump in if he wants to, if I don't address anything. But we changed the policy a couple of years ago.
Nice, nice.
Yeah, where we don't necessarily need approval if it's under $100,000. If it is above $100,000, then we would have to bring it, but we are bringing it to you tonight as an action item since it is sole source and we just want it to be transparent.
And also, is the contractor already selected?
So how the staffing agencies work, you know, they already have somebody. And so, yes, there is an identified individual that they have provided to Dr. Keen and her team, you know, certification status, all of that has been checked. They do a lot of the background checking and processing on their end and then we have to do stuff on our end. So the only thing that, you know, nothing is confirmed, the contract isn't signed, there was a player of intent that was attached, but once everything is approved, then we'll sign the contract and we can formally move forward.
And last question, how many students with this contractor be supervising or working with?
I'm going to turn, go to Dr. Keen.
So the way that our services are set up at the high school is that they're inclusive. So we have 56 students who receive services through that inclusive environment at the high school. So this teacher would be a co-teacher with the general education teacher in that classroom. So thinking about 20 students per classroom, this teacher would have three classes a day with the fourth being their planning period. So as far as how many special education students that person will work with, that could vary per day. However, they would also have a caseload and be responsible for the progress monitoring, the assessments, the, the data collection, along with writing the IEPs, conducting the meetings, all the responsibilities that a special educator would have.
That person will report to Kent County Public Schools or through the company that we contracted?
Both. So as, because we are contracting them, they have to abide by everything that we need them to do. So they can't say, oh, sorry, I'm not, I don't work for you. We don't do it that way because that's part of our duties as looking for those contractors. We outline what they will do.
Understood. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. How did you come across Soliant Health? Is that somebody you're-
We have worked with them in the past for school psychologists.
Okay.
So we get probably, I would say anywhere from two to five calls a week from different various agencies. And when we told them this is what we were looking for and they said, well, we have a special educator, that's how we came across that.
So what would be the turnaround? Let's say we approve it tonight, when could this person be in place? I'm sorry, if we approve it tonight, when would this person be able to start?
I would say between a week to two weeks because Soliant Health has done a lot of the onboarding, you know, themselves. And then, you know, we have some procedures in place that we would just need to complete, but it should not, it should not be-
Meantime, looking ahead to next school year, we're vigorously looking to be able to have someone in-house, so to speak?
Yes. So we are doing our Kent County Annual Job Fair, which I think this will be the fourth one we do. We hold it on the first Saturday in May. It's been our most successful recruiting tool that we have. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get some quality candidates.
What's this position again?
This is a high school's special education teacher.
Anybody, any other questions? Ms. McKenzie?
Yeah, just wondering, when I think about Grow Your Own and, and, because I know that this, this is a need now, but, but also, you know, looking towards the future, like, are there any targeted strategies to try to bring in specific to special education?
Yeah, so actually, we, we have seven employees right now through one of our grants who are completing their degree in elementary, early childhood education and special education who are currently working for us as full-time support staff. So, you know, that, that has been successful. All of them are on a trajectory to finish. So we're hopeful that we'll have that pool, but that will only be for elementary. I can speak further that the Eastern Shore school systems are actually working together strategically, the special ed directors, HR directors, and the superintendents on establishing a Grow Your Own alternative educator prep program for the Eastern Shore to focus specifically on special education.
Are other school districts having the same problem we are?
Yes, it's a national shortage.
Okay.
And I think the other positive aspect of it is the teachers that we are hiring through the alternative track. So they're coming to us with a four-year degree, but they may not necessarily have that teaching certificate or teaching background. They come in under a conditional certification and they're working very closely with us learning those ropes as to be a special educator so that way we can grow them to stay within our district as special educators.
Is the conditional two years, is there a-
So that, so those changes were made by MSDV last year where ironically, it has placed more of a challenge on the special educators where now they can only be granted a one-time, three-year conditional license, which means they need to complete an approved program within three years. So this is why, back to what I was just saying earlier, why the Eastern Shore systems, special ed, HR, and superintendents are trying to create a regional program here so that we can, you know, A, ensure that they're getting the proper training that they need, but to complete the program before their certification lapses.
There any other questions? All right, the administration recommends approval of the sole source contract with Soliant Health LLC for the remainder just of this school year for a total of $33,750. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Rhodes made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKenzie made the second. Is there any other discussion or questions? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Manley.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Hushen. Alrighty, Dr. McComas, the budget discussion.
Yes, so thank you everyone. Last, last couple of board meetings, I have shared with you our preliminary projected revenue from the state and local revenue. Also have shared with you the process of zero basing our budget so that we can make sure our dollars are aligned with our actual needs. Also talked to you about the blueprint requirements of minimum school funding and that model. And then last session, I shared with you sort of our giant wish list and I didn't hold back. Now, this does not include salaries, any positions you saw and that would be additional positions requested. And we identified that the ones in green were the new requests and the ones in white were sustaining requests. So there are things that we're currently doing that we need to allocate funds to keep moving forward with that initiative or resource, as the case may be. And I asked you if you would go back and we looked at our data, our achievement data, and I think Ms. McKenzie asked me to add in there our demographic data so we can sort of look at all of, all of our information. So this evening, I'm really here to listen to what your, your thoughts are around what you would like to see us consider in the budget proposal process. And I ask that you think about those big arcs because I know, you know, I don't want you to feel like you need to go line by line by line. We will get into what will happen moving forward is I will bring forward a proposed budget, right, based on what I hear, the input that you give me, the input that the community gave us, the input and requests that our team has given me, the, our data achievement. So all of that will go into formulating a proposed budget that I'll bring forward later in the budget process. I have a calendar here. So I will present that on April 14th. So today is really about me listening to you and your guidance and thoughts around what you would like to see in the budget.
Should we base this part off of what, off the list?
You can do that. You can also base it off of, you know, having looked at the community conversations, having looked at our data. I think, you know, what would be helpful for me is to hear sort of your big priorities, right, your big rocks that you would like to prioritize. We know we have many needs and of the many things, what are, what would be like your top three priorities?
Well, I mean, I think just to start, you know, given the progress that we are seeing at the middle school and we certainly hope to keep seeing, you know, my mind certainly goes there to try to be as supportive of the progress that's occurring so that they are prepared to enter high school. I mean, that's where, you know, we have needed the most intervention and so it makes sense to keep investing in that space. You know, regarding special education, you know, it would be ideal to, you know, there was like two or three, help me, the instructional, not instructional, the IEP.
Yes.
You know, I don't, I don't know that that three, you know, two or three is realistic, but, but when I think about, you know, focusing on all children succeeding, you know.
Yeah.
I would hope that others would at least consider one of those positions being added just as a support to the teachers so that teachers can focus more on teaching versus the administrative aspects that are very much a part of special education. But then, you know, so that, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
I, I think we should conserve as much money as we can because I think it's going to be a very, very difficult year. I don't, you don't know what's going on in Washington. We don't know if the Department of Education is going to close, if we're going to start losing money. I think we've got to be very careful and stash as much money away as we can right now. I know everyone has their request, but we've got to be very careful. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
For the middle school, since McKenzie, well, McKenzie started with that. For me, for the middle school, couple of things. Line item number 19, the full-time world language teacher. It's something that I think is essential to kind of get our middle school in the right direction. Also, line item 25, the student support specialist. If there's one more year on the current grants, would that be next school year or this current school year?
It would be next school year. We still fund it through the grant, but we put it on there to sort of see because what I asked our team to do is we know that we can't get everything at once, right? We know this. But what I did not want to do was to cause people to look down. I want, people need to lift their eyes and look forward to a vision. So I said, put on there what we need. We know this, it's a multi-year process to try to build what we need to build, so.
Yeah, so line item 25 would be something I would be looking to get my approval. And then also, I think this is page three, line item 63 and 64 for instruction. I wanted to hear a little bit more about what the wit and wisdom consumable, actually-
The middle school?
Yes, grade six through eight.
Yep.
What that does exactly. And then right under that, the Lexia learning. And I would like to know, is that something that benefits the middle school or another school or overall school system for those two online?
Yeah, so I'm going to invite Ms. Jack Mowitz to come forward. So while she's coming up, wit and wisdom is our basic curriculum for English Language Arts at the middle school. And here, what you see is the program was purchased with grant funds. So a few years back, just right before the pandemic, the State Board of Ed passed a new requirement that school systems use evidence-based curriculum. And we were able to use the Maryland Leeds Grant, I believe that was the funds that we used here, most systems use the Leeds Grant, to replace their curriculum with evidence-based. Wit and wisdom is one of those. Consumables are those workbooklets that you might see your child come home and they use it up and then we need to buy a fresh one for next year's students. So on that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jack Mowitz to help.
I think it's exactly what we explained. So the reason it's on the list is that they consume the books here to here, so they'll need to replenish those. It's not really a new purchase. It's one that will come up each and every year. Same thing at the elementary level with their core program. They have wonders. They use the company books to consume and then we have to replenish those each year. Lexia is a digital program and we introduced during the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, Garnet Elementary School was using it before everything had occurred. So it's been a thing for quite a while, but it is something that at all levels, including the middle school level, the staff find to be a very effective intervention in that it can individualize the support that's being provided to the students. So it is something that is on the request list to support, just like you heard.
Is service support, is that in class or at home?
In class. It does have an at-home component to it, but what they're referring to in the budget is what they want to use as part of a tier-two intervention.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, I was just going to say that I had a check by the world language teacher full-time into the middle school as well. I also wanted to ask the question about the Kent County High School Algebra Bootcamp for the summer program because I know a lot of the students have difficulties with math.
That's the high school?
Yes, that's line 39.
Yes, and that's exactly right. You know, when you look at our math scores, our math scores are more dire compared to our literacy. We need improvement across the board, unarguably. But of the two math is certainly we're struggling the most with, and that's exactly a summer kind of jumpstart tutorial opportunity for students.
And also, I'd like to say that, because I'm not sure what may apply as far as, you know, the list of items to what you were talking about in our last meeting, STEAM, because I really like that concept and trying to get that activated off, you know-
And running. Thank you.
Started. So whatever would be supportive of that, I would-
Thank you. One of, one of the things with our STEAM focus for next year, I was looking at, is really lifting up some of what we're already doing. I think we are doing some things, not that I don't want to add to it, I want to build it out, but in keeping in mind, Mr. Rhodes and, you know, just the light up that we have a constrained budget, you know, I will, as part of our strategic plan, you'll see, I'll talk about STEAM over multiple years. And I think next year, one of the big things we can do, hopefully, we can bring on this music teacher that we need to restore from a few years. That's a priority and falls in line with the arts part of STEAM. But also kind of lifting up and showcasing what we have. If you think about with the middle school presentation show tonight, they're, they're trying to build that unified rotation so it kind of gives students some elective, right, so that they can sort of tap in. And that's where a lot of the STEAM can come in. So thank you.
I, I would say that, I'm just going back to what you said to us last, well, two weeks ago about, you know, what we need to be excellent. And I, I, I don't like the idea having to rob Peter to pay Paul kind of thing, but sometimes unfortunately, that's probably what's going to happen. And for me, the most important thing is things that are going to have the most immediate, direct influence on our students and at the earliest age possible. I mean, I think it's amazing what the middle school has done and I, I don't want to, I'd hate to think they'd have to be sacrificed so that we could bolster the elementary school, but if we don't get them at their youngest, it's way more difficult to have to take corrective action. I mean, we're seeing that even with like with, with EOG. You know, I remember Ms. Dorsey making the point a, a year ago, what are you doing for the kids that are in the fourth grade and missed, missed it. So my, my priority is what's going on in, in the classroom and it's, you know, and it's staffing, I guess. I, I mean, I don't want to minimize. I'm looking at the things that could, could support the CTE program at the high school, like, you know, a, a new garage door or the greenhouse. But I, I feel like if, if you don't have the teacher, it doesn't make any good if you, sense if you got a great garage, but there's nobody to teach them how to open the door. So.
And just to that, because actually I did email Dr. McComas over the weekend about those specific CTE costs that you, you know, and it's just because those are one-time-only type things and so that those could potentially, we could get funds in other ways outside of-
Sometimes we can get it from the commissioners if it's a one-time thing. It's just, it's the recurring cost that set us up for the kind of situation like Mr. Rhodes is saying. We've got to be very cautious.
Right, right. And, and I appreciate that, you know, the discussion and, and all of you recognize- And, and I appreciate that, you know, the discussion and, and all of you recognizing there is the one-time cost and then there's the recurring cost and how, and how do we optimize both? One of the things that I, when I talked to Ms. Mackenzie about CTE is, CTE fortunately received some federal funding, Perkins funding, which is always very helpful. But again, you know, you know, in regard to Mr. Rhodes' point around us being sensitive that we may need to pivot if, if things change, right, with our funding streams.
Alden, how about you as a, first of all, as a student and the oldest of four that are being educated by Kent County Public Schools?
Yes, I have some thoughts. I think that the number one priority for me as a high school student especially is ESL help. I think we need a full-time ESL teacher. I, the person we have currently.
At the high school?
At the high school, yes. And she is at the middle school too, four half per day. And I see that, that lack of having more resources in that area is really, that really affects teachers' ability to teach because we have a very large population of non-English speakers. And it is such a barrier and it is so hard and it is so frustrating for teachers who want to help and who, but just cannot. And it's so much extra work and it's, and it's disruptive, but not like, you know, these kids are being disruptive, but like, we don't have the resources to help them. And it's really, I don't know, I just know that teachers, for, it's a really big issue and I think we need more resources. And our, and our teacher that is doing it right now is wonderful, but she, he's stressed out a lot.
Sure, she's spread thin.
I agree with Alden because two things are also highlighted. So at the high school, line item number twenty-seven, full-time ESL teacher. But then also at Garnet, line item number three, the bilingual instructional assistant because the population is growing at Garnet.
Didn't you say the largest Hispanic population is at Garnet?
I can just chime in because there's two very great points that everyone has elevated. So effective next Monday, Kent County High School will have a full-time ESL teacher.
Really?
And then tonight, it was approved that there is a bilingual or a, a full-time instructional assistant for ESL that is going to be at Garnet as well.
Really?
So I could scratch these off the wish list.
Or we need to keep them on the sustaining, the sustaining wish list, right?
Those are, those are two celebrations here.
Yes, I agree.
But that's, that's an example of how like we need to think about this over years, right? Like, so I was able to look at funds and, and find those funds now because it's an urgent need, but that we need to also plan on sustaining that, right?
Is it the current person we have at the high school that is going to be at the high school full-time?
I, I think, Mr. Heschin says yes.
Is there's anyone at the middle school then? Yes, okay, just making sure, okay.
We now have four ESL teachers.
Okay, that's amazing.
Didn't we hire somebody two weeks ago that was bilingual?
Yes, that, yes, so that, that was our new ESL, ESL teacher.
Okay, but we approved that two weeks ago, didn't you?
Yep, yep.
One of the things that I wanted to mention, just because I was emailing about it over the weekend, was about the Pritchard Controls Request. And I know it's not as interesting as the other request, but at the same time, it, you know, you were mentioning that it could save us some money.
Yep, I'll share with everyone what that is. So that's like our heating control. So right now, if, to adjust the heat in any one of our five buildings, we have one employee who goes around and adjusts that. We don't have it in a digital platform where, and even like you could set it, right? So like our heat runs when our buildings are empty because it's manual as opposed to a digital system. So that's one that we need to put some money up front so that we recoup the efficiency of that later, right? So just like at your home, you might have your thermostat set to be at a lower temperature while you're at work and then warm up right before you get home so that you're not spending energy when you're not in the house. So that Pritchard Control, I appreciate you bringing that up because again, sometimes these facilities pieces don't, they're not as exciting as talking about instructional positions, but anywhere we can conserve some money to use elsewhere.
Let me ask a question about line item one-twelve. I know in some of our conversations, we talked about almost as like a rebranding or marketing the school system. For communications, one-hundred-twelve, communications, advertisement ads for positions.
Yes, so we.
I like, I like the means of the thought, but like, I'm looking at the places where we would advertise. I don't think that cat's a wide enough net for high yield for what we're trying to go as a school system. I will also ask the question, when you say communication and advertisement, advertisement, does that go into a bigger marketing picture? And if so, would that number be a little high on the wish list?
Well, I, you know, I, I put a conservative number in there. First, I guess I should back up and say, certainly we can expand some of the, these are examples of what came to mind. Right now, we don't have any money that we spend for marketing the school system. We do have a little bit of money for recruiting that we use to try to advertise for positions. Yes, in a wish list, I would like more because I think what I have discovered is there is a disconnect between what a lot of our community understands about our school system compared to what is actually happening in our school system. And so we need to figure out how to bridge that gap between what is kind of like, that's part of why we presented tonight about the middle school, right? Because some folks may have had a bad experience a few years back and that's what's, that's what's still sticking with them. And we need to help communicate that out in lots of different ways. And of course, we are, we're in a challenging news environment, I think, you know, in terms of, and forgive me because I'm used to coming from a more dense populated area where there's like the TV station, right? And so, sure, but I will say that three thousand was a modest request to just get us started and moving in that right direction.
I don't really think it's a request, I just, let me ask this also about line item one-twenty, one-hundred-and-twenty, human resources, health insurance. Explain to me what the justification means.
So, so that is a request on behalf of our people to increase the current insurance split. So currently, we have a eighty-twenty split for one plan and a seventy-five-twenty-five. So we would like to elevate those numbers by five percent where the board would pay eighty-five or eighty as opposed to the eighty, seventy-five right now to, you know, just help offset what the projected increases will be and what they have been over the last four years.
Understood. I also agree with Lord, Lord Mackenzie's assessment of line item one-twenty-six, maybe not two to three IEP positions, but definitely one for sure and maybe one to two, something like that. Would that be, let's say it was one full-time, one part-time, would that be like a one-point-five?
Yeah, it's, it, I mean, yes. I think, you know, this is something that we'll look at. I just will share what we are currently doing is not working. And so this was a new proposed kind of restructuring of what we do. But I do hear that there's support for figuring out something here. It may not be exactly what we have here.
An overall question that might answer this all-in-one, I asked. So let's just, one-hundred-and-fifty to one-eighty-eight, they're all maintenance requests. But a lot of them, the amount requested is zero and it's not in the wish list, it's actually white. So how would I interpret that with hearing a lot of things like earlier today, we're at a hundred and four percent of maintenance? So how would I be able to go through this maintenance list and kind of prioritize what's needed and what's not needed as it, as it pertains to upkeep and maintenance to have the schools running on a day-to-day basis?
Yeah.
Just, I was going to say, I don't know if Mr. Kirby could answer that because I know last, two weeks ago, when we were going through this, Ms. Stewart explained just because the things were white and weren't in green didn't mean that they weren't still needed or maybe they're things we already have. I can't remember, but there was an explanation with that.
Yeah, these, so these would be contracts, so for, let's take Goodyear van and auto parts, right? We don't know how much, what we may need with that, but that's just sustaining that contract, right? And that, that would be used on an as-need basis. That's an example where like we look at, what's our three-year trend? What is it we typically might spend on van maintenance as, as the example? And that's where, again, what I asked the, the team members to do is tell me what you need to keep doing what we, to kind of keep the lights on, if you will, to keep us in, in business. So we see that that's really more about, we need to maintain that contract with those members and then we only use that if we need to.
Understood.
I have a few more things that I was thinking about in my, when I was coming up with like top three.
Sure.
So number one was ESL. That's covered, that's great. Number two was math, algebra, I was interested in the Algebra Bootcamp, I think that was brought up earlier. I think math is a bit of an issue. There are just so many, I, I see it in my class a lot, there's a lot of learning gaps when it comes to math. And that's, I think our math staff is great. I think, I like, I don't think that, it's not that we need to revisit the curriculum or whatever. I think we just need to fill those gaps that we have, that because of COVID or because of, I know my class had a really weird, a math teacher situation freshman year that like derailed half our, the STEM class. So I think Algebra Bootcamps, especially algebra, it is like such, you need to know algebra to get through any future math. So I think some intervention at the high school level would be helpful. I think hearing what the middle school's doing is really reassuring and hopefully that'll get better in the next few years. But just, you know, for the kids who are in high school now, I think extra math help would be really beneficial. And I know that having, eh, where is it? Supplemental instructional support, like additional teachers that aren't necessarily math teachers in the classroom to just help like for class, the sake of class size, to divide and conquer if, because in some math classes, there are, there's a really wide range of ability. And a, one teacher, I've talked to teachers, math teachers about this especially, they can't accommodate for everything and they need additional help to, because of those learning gaps and because of those things. So I think math development would also, you know, if we increased our math scores, it could, it would look good for us in, in general. But I think that, that's something that's really important. The other thing, this was my third item, the line thirty-three, support for academic programs. That was like SAT preparation, AP exam fees, dual enrollment opportunities. I know we're already doing really well with how, I think we fund two dual enrollment courses per semester and that's really, really great. I think SAT prep could be stronger. I don't know that we have many resources for that. And we do offer it for free for a certain amount of students, which is also great in the school. Instead of like, my parents talk about having to drive out to where, who knows where on a Saturday and take it in the morning. But so it's really good that we offer it here. Same thing with AP exam fees, I don't, I think we waive the exam if you like sign up for it by certain time. But we talked, I know this is maybe not feasible for this year with all the budget constraints that we may be facing, but I think revisiting the idea of additional transportation to and from Washington College for classes would be a really good opportunity because I know there are kids in my school that would love to take a class but can't drive or can't get a ride. And it's a real privilege to be able to do that. And I think if we gave that opportunity, that could be really beneficial and really boost our numbers. Because I know Washington College wants more dual enrollment kids there, they want to boost that program and I think we would like to boost that too. So I think that would be really helpful in doing that. And yeah, those were my three.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I have a question. This is to you, Dr. McCombs, for line seventy-two. Excuse me. The justification, excuse me. How do you view, especially with the stain going on, the importance of US history and world history and government? Like, would that be a priority or would math and English kind of offset that?
Well, and, and full disclosure, I'm a social studies teacher, certified social studies teacher. So I have my own, you know, bias. But here's the thing, literacy is part of science and social studies. Social studies is fundamentally a literacy course. That's why I really wanted to emphasize the point around the argumentative writing today because that, if you look at social studies standards, that's what the skill sets are. It's analyzing and then formulating a stance and writing about that and presenting that, you know, and a verbal argument, a written argument. And so a lot of those things do overlap and the same with science. Science has great vocabulary. There's a lot of literacy demands in science in particular. It has very specific, what in, in, in the profession, we'd say tier-three vocabulary because it's very specific to the content. And so a lot of those skills weave into science and math. And so it's really about making sure that the school is doing school-wide initiatives like they spoke to around the writing, right? So, you know, we, we don't want to leave social studies and science out because they are applied mathematics. They are applied literacy skills, right? And so that's how you, you need to think about those things in concert. So I'm not sure I answered your question because I got kind of excited to talk about instructions. I got excited, let me come back. And so you were asking me specifically about a line, so let me come back to that. Was it seventy-one, seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, yeah, purchase for grade six, seven, world, history, world history, government. And I think that's why I'm going to ask Ms. Jackamowitz if you would come back up because this is, we don't have it identified as consumables. Are we looking at refreshing the textbooks there for line seventy-two? Do you need a copy?
I'll look it down.
Okay. Sorry, I had to get excited about. Literacy and math. Nine-thirty at night or whatever time it is.
I apologize, I just didn't have it in easy access.
Why is she waiting on that? For line item seventy-five, the Spanish curriculum has no price point, so is that free?
I'm wondering if you can speak to, because there are some requests for music teachers and so is there any priority?
Yeah, so I, I will just.
I was going to say, somebody put out there that we were cutting our art and, on Facebook, which I try not to read, but, and then that said we were cutting our arts and, and, and they were, they were commending the play and said, isn't it a shame? Because we're, and I was like, no, that's not because we just said two weeks ago what a priority is. You just said it tonight when we were applauding them, how important that is for students, so.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we were able to find that, that came from someone who was kind of working with past, from a past experience. So I appreciate the opportunity to just clarify and assure the community that first, I have not sat down and cut anything yet. And two, we, you know, if we're really saying that we want to build a school system of excellence and it's anchored in exceptional and unparalleled STEAM education, A is for arts and that's all the arts, right? That's music, that's visual art, that's theater. I mean, we're not poised today and I don't know that we'll be poised in the next thirty-six months, but it would be fantastic to expand that to dance, right? So it's really about creating more opportunity in the arts for our students, aligning what we have, elevating what we have and then looking for those opportunities to expand it. And to begin that journey, I would offer that the first thing we need to do is restore the music teacher that we had to reduce a few years ago because our, our reduction has created a model whereby we are not able to keep music teachers with us because the schedule and having them spread over two schools, it's just not working. And we've gone through, I think, three music teachers. And so clearly, the data is telling us that is not working. So our first step with that would be to, to bring back that music teacher.
And if you look at the, because I'm on the, the music email that Ms. Bort sends out every Sunday night and when you look at that schedule she maintains.
It's intense.
Good lord, I don't know how one person does it, I mean, it's two full-time jobs.
It is, it is, and it's long overdue. I think that is the top priority that came out every single principal, over and over, would like additional support. I can tell you a little bit about line seventy-two now. That is the core program at the middle school level. Some of you may recall a number of years ago, we had something called Discovery Program. This was an online curriculum and we, that both in science and social studies in middle school. And the grades six, seven, and eight are looking to adopt a new program, which is why you see the $1,000. And that's specifically for government, social studies, in here of that area. So that is a request, it's a new request for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
I have a question before.
Oh, Jean.
Sorry. I wanted to know, you remember last year we had the Black
I wanted to know, remember last year we had the Black History Program that we started?
Yes.
Do they still offer it?
It is continued. Right, so this is the course at the high school level. Cheryl Bachman is teaching that, and that is still available to our students.
Okay, was it on a contractual or?
So she is one of our core teachers at the high school, and we will continue to offer that. And I'm just thinking that for the center, there's no need to, we don't have any intention to.
Okay.
Right, and there's no budget quest, request because we already have the materials for.
Is that hold true? Because the other thing we added last year was American Sign Language. Okay. Anyone have any other questions or comments? No, so what's the next step, Dr. McComas?
So the next step, and I'll just say to the board members, if you have a thought tomorrow or next week, certainly don't hesitate to let me know. The next step is I will bring forward on April fourteenth, a proposed budget. And that proposed budget will be based on our needs, our data, our revenue. And so I'll bring forward a proposed budget for us to look at April fourteenth. And that, while we're on that, and I'm not sure, Ms. McGee, if this is the right moment where I should say, just for the public, our March twenty-fourth board meeting will be changed into a board retreat in early April.
Yeah, I was going to mention that at the end, when we talk about when we're going to meet again.
Okay, great.
Is there anything else for, on the budget discussion? All righty, I think the next thing is the citizen advisory committee? I'm not sure who's, is that you?
So I'll, yes, so we, in our last meeting, we had, if I recall correctly, we had identified our citizens advisory leadership, board leadership for the committee. And I believe Ms. McKenzie had asked if we bring the policy forward for just general discussion. So that's why I present this tonight, just for the board's general discussion as an outcome of our last time we talked about CAC.
Yeah, I mean, the main thing that I talked about last time was just that it's highlighted as a channel for public concerns, but that doesn't seem to be how it's intended to function. And so I just feel like it needs to be clarified exactly how it functions. If it's not really a channel.
So I was looking at your agenda for your meeting in two weeks, and that's on your agenda, isn't it, the continued discussion and review or?
I'm not sure because I think the superintendent wanted to once over it again.
Yeah, and so I think really when we look at it, I think it kind of comes back to Ms. McKenzie's. I think the question really for us to sort out is here where we're, in our policy, we define as saying the committee serves as a channel for public concerns, advice and communication, and to make recommendations as requested on topics and issues, not exclude personnel impacting the education programs of Kent County schools and mandate it, so forth. So I think the question to me really is the idea of the public concern. So how does that function relation to this board, right? Because we know here, and tonight's a good example, right? We have members of the community who have a concern about something that we're doing. They're coming, participating in public forum to let us know and to let the community know that they have a concern or about something that we're doing. So to me, then the question is, you know, the citizens advisory doesn't have public forums the way we do here. So I think to clarify, you know, if concerns are brought here, then the board directs the committee on what the focus on, right? So if the board gets a concern, then the board can direct the committee to do some research on that in the community, and then, or whatever the research is that's pertinent. And then the committee makes a recommendation to the board. And then the board decides to act or not on the committee's recommendation. So I think that was part of what we were trying to clarify. And I offer that as thinking about the flow.
And so does this sound, Dr. McComas and I were talking about it too, because we didn't think it was the right word choice. So that a concern would come to us, you know? And then we would turn around and direct it to you. And part of your research or fleshing it out would be, then you could do a deeper dive to get the public's, the community's input. And then that turns around and comes back up, you know, it goes down and then it comes back up. Does that sound?
No, to me, that's how I foresee it, as how the CAC should operate. That's how I foresee it.
So I think that that was really, I think, what we wanted to clarify because I, we knew that their role is to advise us, but then we were kind of getting, I think, a little like confused on the public concerns. Does it originate in the committee and then come to us? Or is it originate with the board and then the board tasks the committee to do? And I think we clarified.
That's what I think we all agree, right?
I understand.
Did it originate with the board?
Yeah, so like, you know, we would hear, like, tonight, for example, we had community members who express a concern and disagreement with something. So that's, I mean, that's the example we have tonight. It could be on something else, maybe it's cell phones.
Or Mr. Rhodes had mentioned a couple of months ago, or uniforms or something like that.
Right, right, right. And so if the board gets a concern, then they could ask the committee to do some investigation and research around that and then provide the board with a recommendation.
Okay, I think that it may need to be clarified more so to the members of the CAC. Only because a lot of the ladies that were there, sometimes I think they would answer the question, if I'm not mistaken. But if someone brought a situation to them or something that they, somebody had a concern about, and then they would come and the people could not, they could come to the meeting, but they weren't allowed to, you know, talk and do things like that. The people that are a part was allowed to talk.
Yeah, advocate for that.
So now you're saying that's not so?
Well, I don't think it's exclusionary. I mean, it's really, the committee's a board committee, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem that they couldn't do that. But I think it's sort of like, which way are you receiving the information, right? So.
Could they receive it both ways?
Sure.
Because they were waiting for us to give them something last time so they could work on it. But if they did have something to bring, could they still?
Sure, they, they.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
Now, somebody from the CAC or you, since you're the chairman, could come to us and say, hey, you know, at our March twenty-fourth meeting, we discussed this. What do you think about us giving the CAC a directive?
My, well, one of my concerns with that type of trajectory is I want the community to understand the Board of Education is where they're supposed to bring their concerns, their issues, whatever it is. The CAC is a community bridge for us. These people are put in place to go into the community on our behalf and go into the niches, the nooks and crannies of the community and bring us information to deliberate or vote on. I don't want a two-way street. Now, a two-way street with communication, yes, but like coming to give your grievance or your concerns to the CAC, then the CAC ultimately telling the authoritative power how we should operate?
No, 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 no. So their advisory and the CAC, the CAC in no way circumvents the authority of the board.
Correct.
They have, the committee has no authority to do anything other than to maybe educate us and bring us information.
Yes, no, I agree. I'm just, I think one of the things, once we clear this language up, it'll help, but then also the engagement, so to speak. Once, because I haven't did a meeting yet. I want to see that type of engagement and then see, because we were told by Dan Hudson maybe two months ago that, hey, they need direction. Well, that's not going to be an issue. They're going to get direction on the stuff we speak about up here because I think that's how, I don't even read in the rules. What we discuss is what should be discussed in the CAC. So they're really doubling down on a conversation in depth that we've already had within the CAC and then within the community. So that way, it adds another layer of like with the calendar, how they went out four times. It just adds another layer of, well, we got six hundred responses from here, but the CAC also said this. And it helps us make a better judgment call in the servant of the wider community. I think, well, I know one thing I will do as the chairman of that is to hone in on the direction of information, if that makes sense. Like, hey, here's what we have for you all. They're going to get a full plate.
That's what they want.
Well, they're going to get it because also, my biggest thing is I want to see the effectiveness of it. Because me personally, I'm like, why do we need it? Why do we need it?
Well, there was some discussion about that very question because we're only, I think the board is only required to have one advisory committee. Now, we have them for special ed and maybe some others. And when it was, we've had a CAC apparently for a long time, it was dormant up until about four years ago. And it took a long, it took four or five meetings to bang out even what now needs to be even banged out a little bit more. And it was not a unanimous decision when it happened. So because the person who voted in dissent said, we already have an advisory committee. So anyhow.
Well, I think, you know, we can, right, right. So I think that's really our primary focus in our next meeting.
Yeah.
And then I was looking at, realized the timeline, we'll have to look at who's up for.
Or the able, but is there, you said they all set, correct?
Yeah, well, so in February, we were supposed to start taking applications and supposed to appoint the new members at the April meeting. Now, last year, it was a struggle to get enough, that's another thing, we can't seem to get enough people that want to serve on that.
Well, I was going to ask that as well. Is that something, maybe we talked to Dan?
We pushed the date back a little bit, but when a new slate of members comes on, every year, you've got a, you have the potential for half of the members turning over. Now, some members may want to stay, you know? Yeah, so.
But I think with that, because it's sitting on the website, but I would say the same thing that we discussed during the calendar. If we really want that community engagement on the CAC, we need to get that word out all year long and say, hey, do you know this is coming up? Like, anything information-wise, we can give it out at any moment during the school year, anytime during the summer. So that way, we can also gauge the interest level. So if we're getting every year consistently two people interested and we're struggling to fill it, we might revisit like, is this really needed? But if there's a big enough word out with a lot of time behind it, maybe we get a big pool to pull from. Because I think some people would be interested in this just as a way to give feedback to the school. And we find out, we're like, even with Alden, when she's being proactive and going into our community, she's getting a lot of feedback. We've seen it with the calendar, we're getting a lot of feedback. I just think we need to make sure we're getting a lot of feedback with this so that way it's maximizing the purpose of it.
You have a student that's one of them.
Yeah, but he hasn't been to a meeting yet.
Oh, he was, he was in August.
Maybe he was at the first meeting, but then he was on the FFA trip. Billy Crestell's the student.
Oh, okay.
And he was on the FFA trip and all that. So one of the things that was kind of eye-opening to me was back in July, I think it was July or August, when we, which was the, the meeting right after new people came on board. It was more than one person who said they didn't even know this existed. So, and there, there, some of them were actually on staff in our schools, which kind of was a surprise to me, so.
Because I know people in the community who just looking for anything to do. And these type of things will probably fit their means of wanting to give back to the community. And then it also turns into a high level of engagement, which will help change perception because if we're constantly asking for the input, we're going to get to a point in our school system where we're going to get so much input without even turning every stone that we're going to be able to start making highly effective decisions. So I guess we with the language.
So what do you think we should?
Well, I think, I think we discussed here sort of how the concerns can flow, right? And we identified that there's multiple entry points, right? A concern can come this way, we get emails, right? And then if there's a member of the CAC who, the community member has raised something, they can bring it back to the CAC to say, hey, this was something, you know, my neighbor talked to me about this concern. And then, but it's ultimately the board that decides what the committee does, put its efforts around. I'm wondering if it might be worth, after we have our next CAC meeting, to actually kind of create a visual flow chart. That may be helpful as well. And, yeah, and then, so I think we, and then our other next step is we need to advertise for any openings that are coming.
Maybe Mr. DeVilio can put, I think he put out a news release last year, or you could do that for us.
Because I think even with us doing the budget right now, CAC would be a great place to say, hey, here's some of the things that the board thinks scored high or our staff scored high, what's your input or what's the community input? Like, I think it's just an opportunity to do our job a little better.
Sure, sure. And just so that you know, and maybe if you want, we can add the, some of the priorities around the budget to it. But we did engage them in the community conversation protocol.
Oh, yeah, they're on the list.
And the budget was one of the, one of the pieces of that. So we did think that that was a good forum to get their advice and input on those categories to inform the strategic plan and budget process.
I have just one more question. I'm looking forward, trying to see now. The topics that should be discussed in a citizen advisory committee meeting should be things already discussed at a public board of education meeting. Did I read that correctly or no?
But when it says should be, does that mean that it definitely has to be, have been something we've discussed previously or does it?
I mean, I'm pretty sure like new, new items or new topics will come up in the flow of a conversation where someone might say, hey, that might be a topic of concern to revisit later. But like, for a good foundation of what should be discussed?
It starts at the board. I mean, it will, I mean, my gut reaction is it would be something that's key here. We may not have had a big discussion about it.
Right.
We may have said, you know what, hey, that needs a deeper dive. Maybe the CAC could help us with that.
So is it something where the language might say it needs to be things discussed on the agenda? Well, not solely to it though, but, because let me ask this question, do the CAC vote? Like, are they taking standing votes in this meeting?
Well, I, I, I think they, it is a committee, so I think they would need to follow Robert's rules of order, right, around voting. But again, they're not making decisions, they are just making recommendations. So I think their voting would be, do we want to send this recommendation to the board?
Correct. No, exactly how I, yes, correct.
Lauren, was that a good start to opening that conversation?
I appreciate it. Because I think it's something that could be genuinely useful and, you know, discussing it and, you know, really narrowing down, this is, this is how we want to function, just making that clear, I think it's just.
No, I think we all agreed.
Yes, yes.
All righty, any more discussion about that, guys? All righty, Ms. Manley, I think I saw a follow-up for public discussion, public participation? Ms. Dolgus, I don't need to read over, and thank you for your patience.
Yes.
All righty, so Ms. Dolgus, and she's going to be talking again about media.
Yes, I, first of all, I want to thank you guys for prioritizing student safety. I know that's important. And for allowing me to speak on this again.
Of course.
And keeping you all from going home. We appreciate your decision and also appreciate the decision to allow parents and students to video from the stands, which we understand is important. Listening to the procedure being discussed today has enhanced our understanding of it. However, the concern is about ensuring the procedure is consistently applied to all spectators. And I'll give you an example. My son came back from his leukemia treatment as a football player on the sideline with the football team. He was told he was allowed to be on the sideline. Fine, he removed himself on the sideline, went in the stands with me. However, the spectators on the other side of the football field, kids throwing football around, you know, people walking all around, I brought it to the admine attention. And the response to me was, I don't have control of that side. That, that whole piece of property should be your control.
Agreed.
And as I spoke earlier, when my son Greenly was told he wasn't allowed to video, then in turn, I have people texting me, I'm running a concession stand because the whole other team, as parents and everybody else on the sideline, welcome in and videoing. So if you're going to enforce it, enforce it for everyone.
Okay.
And that's, that's the concern. And it's not only my concern, it's a lot of parents' concern.
Correct.
But if you're going to enforce it, because it looks, and I'm going to be honest, it looks like you're targeting these students that you're telling no. And it's not there to them. If you're going to tell them no, then you need to tell the other people no. And that's, that's the concern for all of them.
Sure.
Because they all feel targeted from this. Because it's not being an equal thing. But yet again, I understand Ms. Hempstead doesn't have thousands of administrators to enforce it, so who's going to be enforcing this? Is she going to be given extra help to enforce it? And that's, you know, again, that's another question or concern for you guys. But again, I think that you guys need to look at it as if you're going to enforce it, then it should be enforced amongst the whole spectator or whatever, whatever event.
Sure, thank you.
But I really appreciate you guys.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dolgus.
Alrighty, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Yes, just on what we just heard. I will say this, I do know there have been inconsistencies, but this is prior to having something in writing. So I would like to see how those inconsistencies are straightened out a little bit. Like, I do think, you even said it, when we're watching sports, people are getting hired to be at these games, to watch these games, and everyone should be accountable for their job. If they come to Kent County Public School Systems, we're responsible for the home and the away side, and the crowd, the parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. So I will say, I have, I don't want to say which game I know where they sent me the video, but it was a very, very much perception of inconsistency with the Dolgus family. So I understand her complaint, where it comes from. If we kind of hone down on that, I think it'll go away quickly.
I agree, I support consistency.
I was going to say, I, I, I think we need to make it clear that when they're quote-unquote "in our house," no matter who they are.
Correct.
Especially from, and I know exactly what Ms. Dolgus is talking about because I saw that, that incident. I know exactly where Brinkley was and who else was standing there doing it. I think we need to empower whoever it is that's going to be policing this, so to speak, to say, you have the authority. Matter of fact, it's your job to tell somebody from the other school that they're not permitted to do this.
Got to be a little bit more proactive.
And the other thing we can do proactively is the athletic director, as well as me as a supervisor, we can work with how we can counter parts in the wayside conference and send it out, you know, what our procedures are at the start of each season. We can even discuss at the old meets four times a year. So, you know, that is just one way that, you know, we can at least say, hey, this is what our procedure here is. So when you come here, this is what the expectation is. And not follow you or have to stand on site that will ensure that it's self-sufficient.
A question to you, Dan, as a supervisor of student athletics, do you attend games?
I attend some.
Well, you can't do them, yeah, yeah, you can't do them all. So typically at a game, I would assume is the athletic director, some part of admin, maybe not always a principal, and then people who are probably hired to maybe work the shot clock, maybe do crowd control, maybe do concessions.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a combination of that. But we have had discussions actually towards the tail end of this season about hiring additional game day personnel, especially as we're told with some of the incidents we've had both away and home with crowds about hiring, hiring game day personnel.
You answered my question, I was leading up to that, you answered it, yes. I think that would be best.
I don't know that this would fall under their purview, but at least at basketball games, the Kent County Sheriff's Office is there too. And football, matter of fact, yeah.
And, you know, sheriff can, you know, always, you know, play with your additional support, he always sends out whoever he can, even, even like Mr. Dolgus. He's usually there, so we do have a good partnership with them, but I can't hurt, you know, to have some additional staff, you know. I, you know, even when I was looking inside the classroom, I used to work games with people that had four staff stations that had, had.
Let me ask this question, because I think the two major incidents with safety happened on the road with us.
No, the one was at our gym.
The Colonel one?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's say for St. Michael's, when it happens away, is there, is, is there a protocol for teams, if it happens with any sport, a protocol they should follow to immediately implement maybe a rule of safety? Maybe it's, hey, we're going to concede the game, call the game, depending on what the threat is, is there a protocol in place?
It's usually the admin conjunction with the, with the game day life referees. So for the instance, the incident here with First Colonel, the refs actually spoke with administration and asked for the gym to be cleared because they're only.
A minute fifty-five to go.
There you go. But so, you know, I think the, the school admin and the refs just work in partnership.
Agreed.
I can't speak for whatever other school system's regular procedures, but that's usually how it works.
Correct, agreed, alright.
And I'll, I'll just offer, you know, please know, my, my intention is not to be inconsistent. And my intention is to bring greater process, structure, process procedures. And I, in my observation since the beginning of the school year, you know, we're kind of rebuilding our systems and structures here around this. I know we just last, was it April, May? When did my predecessor appoint you was? We didn't have a central leader of athletics up until less than twelve months ago, or we might just be approaching twelve months. And I, you know, I said to Mr. Hushen right out the gate as I started observing things that we have a lot of work to do around our culture of athletics, our processes, our procedures, and we can do that. And I absolutely respect and appreciate and intend to provide the consistency that's there. And I, I, that's why I wanted to make sure I came back, because I could hear you were like, no, like, how are you going to really manage that, right? I could hear the, the real question in that, and I didn't want to back away from that. And I just offer, in my experience, when I was a high school administrator at Aberdeen High School, we had, at one point, we had a culture where football games, people were just all over the place, and it created an unsafe situation. And we went to a, a procedure where people had to be seated in stands unless they were going to get something at concessions or the restroom. We did not allow people to just gaggle around and create. And we had people, you know, some among the faculty who were like, oh, you're never going to get that under control. We got that under control, we create a better environment where people who came to the game were focused on the game, it was a safer situation. So I just offer that we can get to where we need to be. I know we're not there right now, and please know my intention is, is honorable. And so I just want to say thank you for the support, thank you for your engagement, you know, you're valued members of our community by all means. And thank you, Ms. Hempstead, because it's no easy job running a school and running ga, you know, athletic night after night. I've been there, you know, with those, you leave the building at eleven o'clock at night and you're back there at five-thirty the next morning, right? So, so thank you, everyone, for your support as we strive to make a more consistent and structured environment for our student athletes and other events.
Alright, so just a couple of reminders. So the next meeting of the Board of Education at Kent County will be held on Monday, April 14th, beginning at five-thirty PM with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at six-thirty PM. The meeting will be located at the administrative building in the boardroom, 5608 Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I want to mention that on that Saturday, April 12th, from nine AM to noon, Kent County Board of Education will have a retreat down here. And the Citizens Advisory Committee, under the new leadership of Mr. Queen and Mr. Rhodes, will have their first meeting two weeks from today, Monday, March 24th. Is it five-thirty PM?
Five PM to six PM. Don't put me on the spot though, because I don't want no emails, please, y'all. But I think it's five to six PM.
I think it's five-thirty, but.
No, no, we, I think.
Oh, you changed it? Okay, gotcha.
Five to six.
Okay, so anyhow, but you can find that out for sure on the CAC website.
Correct, it is posted on the.
So I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
And just for clarification, it is five PM, I just.
Okay, gotcha. Motion to adjourn?
Bring a motion to adjourn this night, tonight's meeting?
Mr. Queen's made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Dorsey seconds it, is there any discussion? Is there anybody that wants to stay another minute? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and so I don't know what time it is, but it's.